I'm waiting for the live stream to start.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, you're good, Mike. All right, Rosa, go ahead.
All right, thanks. Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, October 21st, and I call the regular meeting of the Brookfield Board of Education to order. In accordance with Executive Order 7B suspending Sections 1-206, 1-225, and 1-226 of the Connecticut General Statutes, the public will not be able to attend this meeting in person, but will have the ability to view or listen to the meeting in real time by way of the Brookfield Board of Education YouTube channel. Furthermore, such meeting will be recorded or transcribed and posted on the board's website within seven days of the meeting and made available as required by law. All speakers taking part in the meeting are reminded that they are to clearly state their names and titles if applicable before speaking on each occasion that they speak. Individuals wishing to participate in public comment portion of this meeting may do so by calling the following numbers. And actually, do we have, I forgot to write those down. Eric, do we have those numbers just in case people need a chance to take them down?
If you don't see them on the agenda here, I'll just read them out for you. The numbers are area code 929-205-6099, or area code 301-715-8592.
Okay, and the meeting ID?
Thank you. The meeting ID is 956-0472-2888.
Okay, thank you. So let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so tonight we have all of our board members present. So up first, we have public comment, and I see one phone number. So Eric, I'll let you.
Sure, so I'll go ahead and unmute the phone number ending in 846. And Rosa, do you want to lay out the guidelines, name and address, right?
Yeah, so once Eric unmutes you, just please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Whoever that phone number is, I am trying to hit unmute. It's not going, so it might be asking you for permission. So if you can just go ahead and unmute yourself, you can do your public comment.
Maybe there's somehow just listening? Oh, there we go. Hello, are you there? Did you just mute them, or did they mute themselves?
I did not. They muted themselves, so I think.
All right.
Yeah.
I think we'll just move on then. Up next, we have the student representative report.
Hi, I'm Tanvi Chenner. I'm the Brookfield High School Student Representative. There hasn't really been many developments since two weeks ago, other than the big email from yesterday. I think it was just disappointing for the students who play fall sports, knowing that their season was kind of cut short. But we do know that it's for the health and safety for everyone, so I guess we could just look back, look forward to coming back to school in two weeks. Also, the seniors were glad to see the sign for the class of 2020 taken down, because those, like, really, it's such a small act to help us see that it's our year of seniors now. And the only other thing is that a couple of people have asked about what's happening with student council for every grade this year, and if we can host any events that have the potential to be, like, modified to be safer during the virus. But that would be all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have written correspondence.
Hi, Ron Jaffe shared articles from Publishers Weekly and the Journal Inquirer, and also shared a video regarding slavery and Indigenous peoples. Tatiana Preston wrote regarding the AIS program. Tammy Sylvester wrote with questions about quarantine, and Jessica Jessica wrote regarding the switch to full remote.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Up next, we have approval of board minutes.
I make a motion that the board approves the minutes listed below from the regular meeting on October 7th, 2020.
Second. Thanks, Troy. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, that's unanimous. Up next, we have the superintendent's update.
All right, good evening, everybody. Thanks, Mrs. Fernandez. And Tanvi, we're gonna keep monitoring everything on COVID and do our best for all of you. Please know that. I have just three items tonight. I'll end with my remarks with some things on COVID and the decision-making process and some context for everyone. It's important to have an update. It's a big, big decision that occurred yesterday evening. But first, just two quick updates. And then I'll defer because we have lots of new business reports this evening and a lot of committee reports. The first one is that there has been movement at the State Board of Education for this current school year to, just for this year at this point, because otherwise it's legislative, is to use any weather-related emergency days where we have to cancel school because of transportation concerns and weather-related issues, that those days would count as remote learning days. That's not in the executive orders from the governor, because his executive orders are all on COVID-related remote learning. So that's something that's in the works. Not for the long haul yet. That would be a legislative decision that has to happen, but for this year, the State Board of Ed is working with the commissioner on that. We are awaiting guidance on that. Once I have the guidance on how those weather-related emergency days will work, we'll certainly share it with the board and with our parents and students, so everybody's on board and knows exactly what's going on. So that's number one. Number two, just an announcement, board retreat. We have our board retreat tomorrow. There's two big agenda items. The public agenda item is the discussion of diversity with our recently established over the summer Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. And so we look forward to having that discussion. And then in addition to that, the board will break into executive session to talk about their board's self-evaluation and set goals for themselves for the year. Rose, I didn't know if there was anything before I move on to the COVID update, if there was anything you might want to share about the retreat.
No, that covered it. Thanks.
Okay, very good. Okay, so I wanted to share with everyone some context about what occurred with working with Dr. Sullivan and the spike in COVID cases here in Brookfield and certainly in Connecticut, and just build a little context so people understand what's exactly what's going on. And so the first thing I want to do is express my appreciation to, you know, our faculty and staff and students, the board, and the families, our administration, for all the support during this most difficult time. There's nothing more that we want for all of our students here in Brookfield, and that is for us to have all of the students back in school and frankly, how things used to be. This has been an awful experience for almost all of us, and we know the toll it takes on families, staff, and students. The administration, faculty, and I live with the fallout and extreme challenges and constraints placed upon us from COVID every day in our roles as school teachers and school leaders. We received emails from parents today questioning the decision to move to remote learning, and other emails thanking the district for the decision to close school. As far as I know, I have been able to respond to every single one of those today. We need to make things crystal clear for those who might think the closing of our schools was a quick decision and maybe even an overreaction. No decision in the school district, including the strong recommendation from Dr. Sullivan that we should close the schools, is made in haste, is knee-jerk, or considered in a vacuum. In this case, health data, a stream of new positive cases, and the multitude of emerging needs to quarantine students and staff were all taken under consideration. We also must consider the CDC, Department of Public Health, and Connecticut State Department of Education requirements that we must live within as we run our public schools. As leaders, we do not have the luxury of inaction or do-overs when it comes to the safety of our students and staff. In Brookfield, we have approximately 2,600 students and their families to consider, along with 416 employees and their families to consider when making such decisions. None of this is taken lightly. So the question really is, why change to a full closure in late afternoon on Monday, on Tuesday, excuse me, when earlier in the morning, everything appeared under control? Simply put, in the morning, we only knew about our isolated cases in which we could target populations and quarantine. By yesterday afternoons, things were not under control. Dr. Sullivan was trying to figure out what was going on. After the two cases we reported to the entire community in the morning, more primary contacts began to report symptoms to their administrators, and other cases within families. These cases were being reported to school nurses. Dr. Sullivan took into consideration the significant uptick in positive cases in student and faculty and staff, and in relatives of students and faculty here in Brookfield, and also with employees that actually live out of town. More primary contacts to exposures continued to be reported to school officials across the district as the afternoon wore on. As Dr. Sullivan learned of these matters, and with his greater perspective of state, regional, and town data, he recommended that we close the schools yesterday afternoon. This was hours after the information we learned of earlier that morning. The case positivity rate today in Brookfield is climbing to almost 10% here in town, and 3% in Connecticut right now, which is the highest it's been since June. Hospitalizations continue to be up, and mortality is now moving up. And Dr. Sullivan is obviously very concerned about this, along with our neighboring districts in this area of Western Connecticut. We learned today that there may be as many as 14 school-related cases and additional eight to 10 cases in town that Dr. Sullivan actually knows about. That's not the cases that are delayed in getting reported to him. As a result, the school district made the decision to transition to remote learning for a period of 14 days, the normal quarantine period. Based on Dr. Sullivan's recommendation, we did this. The decision was quite rational and in the best interest of protecting the students and their families, faculty and staff and their families in all of Brookfield. We certainly recognize the emotional stress that decisions such as these create. We, as administration, have children and families as well who are enduring the same pandemic as everyone else. We must rely on the science of disease transmission and the safety of our precious children, families, and our educators. And I wanted to share that because it's very important to get the facts out there and the decision-making process, and the fact that we listen to the public health experts as part of that, a big part of that process. And we care deeply about our families when they're in school and when they're not in school, and of course, our students and staff. I didn't know if the board might have any questions or things they wanted to say about the decision. I know it's a big decision, and it's difficult for many of us.
John, just want to say thank you for being so thorough and, you know, putting the health and safety of our children, our staff members, and our community first, because that's the most important. This obviously is inconvenient and tragic for some, but health and safety first, and appreciate all the time and effort and that has gone into it, you and along with your team.
Thank you.
John, I also wanted to thank you for providing that additional detail and background, because I think, you know, there has been some confusion among parents. I think people sort of get bogged down in specific numbers, so I think it helped to hear all the different things that you're looking at in terms of people reporting symptoms and having primary contact with infected patients. So thanks for providing that detail.
You're welcome. And, you know, we can't provide that detail to you without the great work of our staff, the administrative team, you know, our nurses, our teachers, custodians. Everybody has a part in this of reporting cases, of acting in good faith and staying home when they're not feeling well, sharing information. It really is taking all of us to do our best, and we stayed open for six, six and a half weeks without having this. And so I really do want to, want to thank everybody, thank the board for their support. These decisions are never easy. In addition to that, it's important, I was working with Mr. Dunn today. While my letter yesterday made it very clear that the buildings are closed to the public, that's part of our effort, especially when school is in session, to create that bubble we talked about over the summer as part of our reopening plans. There is a hearing scheduled for the high school in the evening next week. It's an important one on water and the water line. In addition to that, voting, of course, is scheduled at Huckleberry and at the high school, and those will go on like always without a hitch, and we'll have our cleaning crews there and be working in total collaboration with the town. So no one has to worry about any, any of those issues.
Anyone else? Was that, sorry, was that it, John? Was that your?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Rosa. Yes, I tried to, that was a little long, but I tried to keep everything else.
No, not at all. I really appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
And Debbie, to your point about the clarification, what we can do with this video is, you know, we could work with Eric and clip it, and I could actually send it out as a nice video to everybody, so they can.
That's a good idea.
We'll work on it, okay?
Very good.
Thank you.
Oh, in addition to thanking John, you and your staff for being as thorough as you are, I think we ought to all extend our thanks to Dr. Sullivan and the, and the health team in Brookfield and at the state level, because we couldn't do this without them. And they've been great advisors and great partners. And I saw that Mr. Dunn also took action, so the partnership between the schools and the town, so we act in concert for the safety of our children and our families is superb. So I think I'd like to just extend all of the board's thanks to the partners we work with.
Yeah, and you know what, Bob? I don't want to forget, you know, as part of our meeting today, you know, the leadership team working on all of this, and they've been fantastic. Your point's really well taken, because it's important to mention, Mr. Dunn put out today, well, in concert with Carson Rec, which is a big partner of ours here in town, Parking Rec Department, working with Mary Knox and the team. They are putting a limit, and it's all out on the website, on his sports and some other things right now, to kind of get a handle on what's going on with the spread of the virus. So thanks for mentioning that. Appreciate it.
The only way we'll control this thing, right, is by all acting in concert and carefully. So thank you.
Okay.
I just, quick add, just want to quickly add my thanks to John and the whole team. I just, we are in such unprecedented times, and I think everyone needs to remember that times run a school during a pandemic, and so every first type of decision, and it's only by really looking at the science and thinking about our health and safety that we're really going to forward ahead. So thank you, finally, John and his team.
Thanks, Jen.
All right, so we can move on. I'm actually going to make a motion to move Item A of Old Business, the Tecton presentation follow-up to Right Now. We have Jeff and Eddie and Antonia on the line, so I want to recognize their time on the line here, too. So, um, so, yes, so I moved to move Item A of Old Business to Right Now. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Amy. Okay, all in favor? Hi. All right, thanks. Okay, so I guess the floor is yours, Eddie and Antonia, if you want to maybe walk us through the new materials that, that you have for us.
Absolutely. First of all, thank you again for moving us up in the agenda in a row and for dealing with us being on the road and not exactly able to host last time. So, yeah, we're not going to do a full-blown presentation. Antonia is going to focus really on the materials that have been submitted to try and answer the questions that were asked last time. So with that, I will turn it over to her.
Wonderful. Thank you, Eddie, and thank you, everyone, for your great questions last time, which really were the springboard for the document that we've created today. And Eric, is it possible, do you have the document ready to share, or would you like me to? Share?
I'm, I'm happy to do it.
Okay.
Unless you have it up, but I literally just pulled it up on my screen right now, and I can pull it up for you.
Excellent. That would be great. So if.
Just to confirm, we're still heading over to Section 4?
Actually, if we could start just at the table of contents, which should be the second page, that way I can give just an overview of the whole document, and then we'll spend most of our time on Section 4. Wonderful. Thank you so much. So there are three PDFs in this packet total. We are focusing tonight on the resource guide. There's also an Appendix A and Appendix B. So within the contents of the resource guide, we've given a little bit more of an overview of WELL and some more detail about the certification process itself and how it sets it apart from other sustainable building standards. So that comprises Sections 1 and 2. The benefits of WELL certification, we've connected those to the curriculum and the ways in which the new Brookfield Elementary School uses the WELL-designed concepts to enhance the educational experience. And Section 4 is where we took the questions that we received from the group last time and answered those in a little bit more detail. This way, we can have conversation around those tonight, and they're also written in narrative form so that you can reflect on them. And if additional questions pop up, we can either tackle those tonight or in the future. And we, similar to the presentation from last time, just identified a few considerations in making your decision and gave you a little bit more information on the timeline of WELL certification and the approximate cost. So that is the resource guide. Appendix A contains some examples of some of the annual submission spreadsheets, the letters of assurance that would be required by the owner. So if, if, we can spend some time also looking at that when we get to those questions in Section 4, so that you can see some exact, some examples of that specifically. And Appendix B has some of the research studies and some links to some other, excuse me, some other schools that are WELL-certified or pre-certified that you can take a look at. So with, with that, we can move to Section 4, Eric.
Great, thank you. I'm following along on my screen here, so I'll do the same. All right. All right, so I think the first question, what does it take to achieve WELL certification? Basically, I think the highlights of this are that it's, it's a collaborative process between us as the design team and our design partners and the school, faculty, and you all as, as owners and stewards of this, of this WELL, WELL-certified school potentially. So what it would take is there are certain policy-based features that we'll have to discuss to, on the scorecard, which we can opt in for or opt out of based on how they fit in with your curriculum and some of the policies that I'm sure are already in place that align with WELL. So that'll be one conversation that we have on the scorecard, is which of those more policy-based features we can incorporate and which we can forego. The letter of assurance, and we can look at this example if we would like, but the letter of assurance is really a simple, a simple process where it's a document generated by the International Well-Building Institute. So there's nothing that has to be actually written from scratch by the owner. It's just a checkbox and a signature that those features are met in, in the, in the project. And those are, again, more policy-based features that we can, that we would have already been chatting about relative to, to the scorecard. And so again, just, I think it would just be a simple check of a box and a signature on that document, and we can take a look at that letter to, to give you some understanding what that, what that looks like exactly. And the third component is the annual submission documents. And those are also in the appendix, and essentially, those are spreadsheets already generated by WELL. You can use their templates, or you can develop your own, and that would involve monthly or semi-monthly checks of some of the building systems and some of, some measurements in, in terms of electricity usage and things like that, that you can get from utility bills. So there's no special monitoring technology required. It's all equipment that you would already have at your disposal, or things like utility bills that you can reference to get that information. So we chatted a little bit about that owner's letter of assurance, which is just a checkbox and signature pre-crafted by WELL, something that you can download, and we can just quickly fill out. To maintain WELL certification, there are the three components of those annual submissions, which, again, if you're maintaining them on a weekly or a monthly or semi-monthly basis, would go, they would go pretty quickly if you're managing it yourself. There's also an option to bring on somebody from WELL who would manage this process for you at, at an additional cost, of course, but that cost could be offset potentially when it comes to the second component of maintaining WELL certification, which is performance verification. So in addition to the annual submissions and performance verification, there's that, the actual recertification itself, which nothing actually involved for that, except the paying the recertification fee. But if for the annual submissions, you're using a WELL-performance testing agent, then that cost that you've incurred to bring that individual onboard does benefit you when it comes time to, for performance verification. Because that, those tests that they're conducting count towards performance verification, so the scope is reduced at that point. The annual submission process are those spreadsheets, templates already generated by WELL. We can have a look in the appendix if you'd like. And again, it's just simple things like how much electricity you're using, how much, how much recycling is going into, how much you're recycling, for example. The maintenance of the air filters within the space, make, checking those on a semi-monthly basis. So there are just some, some routine logs and spreadsheets that WELL has already created that you can use and follow. How many other schools in our region are WELL-certified? The answer is you, you would be a trendsetter, because there aren't a whole lot. There's only seven schools listed across all of the United States, and two are certified, one is pre-certified. And the pre-certified school is here on the East Coast. So a lot, a lot of the activity related to WELL is happening on the West Coast, even though the headquarters for the International Well-Building Institute is here in New York City. So the, the East Coast, you have an opportunity here specifically in New England to be the first WELL-certified school in our region, and potentially the first on the East Coast. Okay. There are a few similar case studies, and the links to those are in the appendix. Just quickly, I think I'm going to spend time talking about, there's one that's actually not yet certified. It's the, the third paragraph here towards the bottom. It's Chinook Trail Middle School. And that project is the most similar in terms of budget and square footage to the new elementary school project. So even though it's not certified, they've used the WELL-designed building standard to incorporate a lot of their sustainable design features into their project. And the way that they've marketed this online, the way that they discuss their sustainable goals and the way that they promote their connection to the educational environment, I think is, is a great case study for the Brookfield Elementary School. Some of the design strategies that we've used. Again, this, there's more detail on this in Section 3. But just to let you know, I think we've just identified here a few, I think we can can let you read this, actually, just in the interest of, of your time. I know you have a lot on your agenda tonight, so I'm going to try to speed up. Yes.
Antonia, this is very important for the, for folks to know about the new school design. I mean, you talked a lot about
Okay.
which is important, and you answered some of those questions from last time. But I think this is one, to share with the features of the school, which are the innards in a lot of ways that people aren't necessarily aware of. So go, go take, go through that one. That's an important one, I think.
Okay, okay.
For the public as well.
Thanks. Thank you, Dr. Brown. I appreciate that. So we can spend some time maybe in Section 3 as well, but just to quickly look at it here. The radiant heating and the chilled beams, the displacement ventilation, the increased fresh air. So our MEP partners are really spending a lot of time, and we're coordinating with them to make sure that we get the systems-based components in the school. to make sure that we get these systems-based components in the school to really enhance not only the the fresh air coming into the environment, which we know enhances learning, but also the energy efficiency and the opportunity for students to experience these systems and and feel the feel the difference in the school. We know that that displacement ventilation system lets out air at at slower rates, so it's a quieter system. So are the chilled beams. So again, just having the that in mind in the learning environment to really allow students to key in more to the instruction of of their teachers and have reduced background noise to aid in their, to aid in their learning. Daylight, we know, critical for, critical for learning and balancing that daylight with reduced glare. So you'll see on the elevation, exterior elevations, a lot of windows in the classrooms to bring in that daylight, but also a lot of creative strategies to reduce glare. Occupant control of lighting and daylight sensors. We're using a lot of dimming controls in the rooms, automatic sensors, occupancy sensors. So all of these things, not only contributing to energy savings, but allowing that the teachers and students to individually control their their rooms to really optimize the learning environment. Acoustics, of course, critical, again, not only for for learning and privacy of sound, but also just to, especially in key spaces like our larger athletic rooms in that in the central part of the the core part of the school, making sure that we pay attention to sound in areas where they're going to be performances, pay attention to sound in relation to where there's physical activity spaces happening near the media center, for example. So really taking a critical eye on that to not only choose the right sound partitions to serve the purpose of the room, but be mindful of the the whole experience at the same time. And then the softer side of things, contributing to mind, community and nourishment. And we know that there's already sustainable and healthful menus in place at in near school district. So we want to monopolize on that and also give students the opportunity to grow their own food and raise garden beds outside, accessible design throughout the school, but also extending that to the playsapes so that everyone has access to to those those features to enhance our physical and mental well-being. And nature walks, appreciation of the native plantings, the opportunity to again, interact with those raised garden beds, the natural features of the site, the natural wetlands and animal species that are so so critical. And the pollinator pathway that we're envisioning incorporating towards towards the the main entrance of the school, the bioswales, all of these sustainable features are doubling as opportunities to engage with students and their curriculum. So all that is covered in more detail in in section three, but thank you for the opportunity to highlight that now. Did I miss anything? Jeff, Eddie, is there are there other components relative to design of the school and its connection to the curriculum that you'd like to offer?
No, I I think you, can everybody hear me okay? Yeah, okay. No, I think you did a good job kind of going through the details. The the project from day one, for those that have been with us for the for the entire ride, the entire project is about, you know, embracing the site. So once you step foot on this property, you're excited to go to school. And and we talked a lot about every opportunity is a teaching opportunity. We want buildings that teach and we want buildings that learn from the students. So this, I I understand we're going through a lot of detail and checkboxes and checklists and all this. Well, is about good design. It's about energy-efficient design and it's about setting the building design up so that students have the opportunity to learn at every aspect, every turn, everywhere they are in the building. And so you'd be surprised that how much energy the building saves, how much fresh air. And these these buildings are very, very sophisticated nowadays. And I I think it's a wonderful opportunity to 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 blend some parts of the curriculum with this because obviously it's an important piece of where we are in society today as far as learning about environment and treating your environment well. So there's, there's a lot more than checkboxes here. You know, it's really the soul of of the project. And I mean, for me, and I understand it's very complicated. How much does it cost? Does it cost more? It's, we have a good design. We have, we have to meet high-performance building standards. We have a lot of all, I'd say, majority of these components already in the project. This is about basically staking, you know, your flag saying we want this building to be about not only just energy efficiency, but about the health and well-being of our students, faculty and staff. And that's, that's the the flag that that this piece that everybody could rally around. So that's for me, that's what well is about. So I I just wanted to kind of give my two cents because I wasn't able to last time. But I mean, you've done a wonderful job going through this and all the technical pieces. But it it's really, it's really going to represent who you are and what the building's about and what your, what the community is about. So that's, it's a little deeper for me than just checkboxes. So I won't take any more time, but thanks.
So Antonia, I kind of want to just jump in here because I think I maybe have, you know, the same question as other board members. But is there, do you have, is the scorecard in this document somewhere? Because I think like what I'm still confused on is, you know, how much of that is already going to be going into the building? And how much, you know, of course, we want health and well-being to be sort of part of the educational experience, but you know, is there going to be a, you know, significant further investment that we hadn't planned on in order to achieve that well certification? And then going forward, you know, every year, you know, I'm talking like very specifically. Like, does this mean we can, we only replace light bulbs with a particular kind of light bulb? Does it mean we have to do water test, water quality testing every single year? You know, I think we're kind of looking at just at least some examples of some of the things that are going to be required of us.
Right, thank you, Rosa. Absolutely. So yes, the scorecard is in appendix A, so we can go there if that would be helpful and take a look at that. There are also other versions of the scorecard that I can send if if after we view it here, you'd still like to know more detail about each of the features that that is shown. So this scorecard in appendix A will just highlight each of the features within the concept, but the detail beyond each of those won't, won't be there. So we can either spend some time, I can follow up with more detailed scorecards or we can spend some time exploring the well-building standard itself. Or I can even just attach that if you'd like. And the great question about the light bulbs and the measurements and what what all will be involved. So we can also spend some time looking at the annual submission document. But overall, you're right, I think that, you know, the light fixtures would require LED bulbs. So that would just be, I I think, the only requirement there. And I know our engineers have focused on using light fixtures that have bulbs that are easy to replace. So it doesn't require a lot of complex parts or maintenance. The requirement would just be that they're replaced with the same energy-efficient LED bulbs that they're that they're installed with. And there is a component to measuring the water quality every year for the annual submission. And certainly, it's part of the performance verification every three years. So that, that would be a requirement. There are some things that we can add to that and things that we can subtract that we can chat about. For example, there are filters that can be added to the water system or not. So there, there are ways that you can move up to more stringent requirements from the baseline or ways that you can just choose, choose to stay, stay there for now. And the beauty of well, like Jeff said so so eloquently, is that it's really the spirit of health and wellness. So it's, it's about this continuous improvement process and the continued measurement and verification and checking in to see how the building is is doing, if it's still serving the purpose that it's was designed to serve and still being a benefit to the health and wellness of the students and faculty and community. So that's a lot of the reason behind the annual submissions and the three-year check-ins. It's just to make sure that it's not a one and done, that this is a process that the students can engage with and learn from and check in and make sure the building is always performing. So so with that, it's an evolution. So if if we start at, you know, measurements of, simple measurements of water quality and in three years, you'd like to add those filters and see what more you can achieve, there's always ways to build into well more, more and more complexity. And benefit, yes.
Yeah, I'm just gonna jump in real quick. So I I think what what we can do, because we provided an awful lot of information to you already on the detail backup, I think what we owe you is a is a summary presentation that kind of hit the highlights of, I think, Rosa, to your point, like what, what do we really need to do? Like, you know, from a maintenance, on an ongoing maintenance standpoint, is there anything we need to buy in the building today? You know, is this going to cost any more money in the project? So we'll hit it, we'll put them into some very succinct categories so that you can understand, you know, do we need to add to the building? Who's going to be involved? And then what do we need to do on a yearly, monthly, weekly basis? And then who can do it? Can the students do it? Can the, can the staff do it? Or do we need outside help? So that you guys can see, I mean, we're never going to hit every, every, you know, nook and cranny, but we're, we're going to, we're going to distill into the major pieces so that you guys understand where you're getting yourself into. And and we'll come back to you because I, we could get, I mean, there's an awful lot to it. Obviously, Antonia is well-versed in it. But in the interest of saving, I I know you have an awful lot on your plate tonight, too. I think we could do, we could spend a little bit more time if you're willing for us to come back again or provide supplemental information. We can, we can give you a summary presentation on those kind of categories.
Yeah, I think that summary would be good. And, you know, in particular, when you mentioned, you know, what would need to be done on a sort of weekly, monthly, annual basis? That gives us an idea operationally, financially, what exactly what we're getting ourselves into. So that would be very helpful.
Thank you, Rosa. And Jeff, what I'd like to add to that is if we could have that, you know, I'm just putting it out there for the board to consider and Tecton to think about. We we are likely to schedule a joint, we will be scheduling a joint meeting on November 17th, I think it is. It's a Tuesday with the NBC for, I believe it's Design Confirmation and Approval. So we we will be together then, so perhaps an advanced summary for the board to consider and prepare for that meeting. I know that's not necessarily the purpose of the meeting, but also with the NBC there because it's a commitment from them, they're an enormous part of this building project. We have a couple of architects there as well on on that team and together. You know, because this, again, this is a town project, it's not just, you know, although it's a school, you know, there's financial commitments and other things that have to go into this.
Understood, yep.
And I just, thinking about structuring it, Jeff, it, and Antonia, it makes sense to me that if you came in and said, look, the problem was we have too many options and too many kind of general discussions. I I would almost love to say, look, here's what you should go for, right? If it was me, here's what I'd recommend, go for these seven, you know, categories. And that gets you a well certification that you'd be proud of. Because, by the way, I like the concept. And here's what has to get, be done to get the initial one. And it's all in the design on this one, or this one's mostly in the design, but it's going to need two or three more things. And then here's what it would take to maintain it, right? And this, you know, and the the things I I worry about is when I, because I've had lots of experience of doing certifications in the business world. You start and then you find out, oh, my God, I have to go and deploy 17 people to go do a bunch of stuff. I have to go, you know, implement these changes to our process. And that was more expensive than I expected. And I heard the discussion about filters and my alarm bells go off and because we want to go in with our eyes open. It's what all of us want to do. I think, I'm not going to speak for every board member, but I think almost of us would say, this sounds really cool. Let's go do it, right? And the fees you showed us didn't scare me. But the, so the unknown for us is a little bit of, what do we have to ask our team to do on day one? And then what do we have to do next year and the year after and the year after to maintain it? And if the answer is, oh, you have to go hire someone to come in and go do certain testing and that's going to be, there's going to be a bill to that, those are the stuff we need to know. And I, so I'm thinking if you had, if you were forthright about, here's a, here's a absolute base case we would recommend you go pursue, and then you kind of have those two columns. Here's what the initial certification, here's what a ongoing would be. Boy, we'd have a lot. And and then flag which ones might have some costs or labor investment. That would help us a lot, right? Because you know, you don't want to go down a path and find out later, oh, my God, what did I get into?
Yeah, we we don't want it to be a chore. It's really supposed to be, you know, an exciting, exciting thing. You you need ROI on this, too. I mean, it needs to, that's the whole mission for this piece. So we'll, we'll, we'll get that to you. That's a good point.
Yeah, I I, you know what? I'd love to be able to tell our community, we've got this very healthy building and it's only going to make education better and better for our kids. And when we can, when we can tell them it's not going to give them COVID and we can, it's a, it's a, it's an absolutely controlled environment and then then everybody will be excited, excited. But the, but I think healthy buildings are cool. They really are. And I've worked in a healthy building that had the business form of this type of certification. And it was a much better place to work in.
Absolutely.
And and so I'm kind of a, I'm a believer in this, I just, this well thing. And when you say there's no one on the East Coast who's done it all, tells me there's a hurdle there that I'm feeling like I'm not seeing yet. That's my worry.
We'll work on it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Tecton?
And I had the same kind of piggybacking, and I apologize if this wasn't addressed, but just is the certification process really long? Like, when we're looking at what's certified, there's 37 projects listed in Massachusetts, but only eight are certified. So that's a big number between the ones that are actually certified. Is that because of the process is very long? Is that because, like Bob said, things come up and people just, buildings just drop it? Or do you have any insight into that?
Yeah, so there is about a year difference between when you finish, actually, it could even be more than that. So there's a year from the point of construction completion when the design team submits all the documents to the International Well Building Institute. One year from that date of construction completion is the minimum amount of time before certification can be awarded. So and that's just because they want to get a certain number of occupants in the building and they're reviewing documentation, they're doing performance verification, which can take five to 10 business days at times. So there, there is a process after that date of construction completion before certification commences. So that's a year. But what we also see is that when projects, those 37 projects that are on, that are registered on the website, the project directory, they'll register sometimes in the beginning of conceptual design. And they still got that whole project design cycle to go through. So in addition to that, one year after construction completion, it's a couple of years to get through the design process. So we might see those numbers increase as more projects move through, through the cycle. Yeah.
Thanks.
Great question. Sure.
All right. So I think what we'll do as a board is is sort of go through the information that you gave us. We'll definitely look forward to getting some of that, you know, more specific information from you. And then we'll, we'll at least revisit this on, you know, the 17th when we talk with the NBC. But perhaps, you know, before that, we can communicate, you know, through email if we have questions and things like that. So, okay.
All right. Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on to subcommittee reports. And first up, we have facilities.
Okay, so I'll report on our meeting from October 7th and our special meeting on October 14th. So we reviewed the school due reports. We reviewed the most recent proposal from Tecton for the boys locker room project and unanimously approved it. We continued to review the capital improvement plan. We finalized it and voted unanimously to bring it forward to the board tonight. The custodial staffing update, we still have green light helping us out. We're still down one night custodian at Huckleberry, one night lead person at high school and one night person at Wisconsin Year. So we have three custodial vacancies. Reopening update, all exhaust fans and ventilation systems are working and and or have been replaced. They're all working as it's intended to. Desks and desk shields have been delivered and are ready to go for the expected November 9th full-in-person learning. Some miscellaneous discussion we discussed was that the district receives a complaint about mice at the high school. The district is is taking it very seriously and is working proactively. OSHA, a pest contractor will be coming out now once a week, set traps at night and retrieve them with bait in the The district is, is taking it very seriously and is working proactively. OSHA, a pest contractor will be coming out now once a week, set traps at night and retrieve them with bait in the, in the morning. And that's about it. If anybody has any questions.
And just a little piece, the capital plan for approval is later on the agenda tonight under new business.
Rosa, you're muted.
Sorry. Okay, up next is finance.
All right, so, um, I want to just give an update on the financials, uh, from our meeting on October twelfth. Uh, that meeting was dedicated to our first look at how we're doing really on this year's, um, budget. Um, so I'm going to spend a couple of minutes talking about a couple of things. I will tell you that after we went through our review, a couple of days later, we actually, uh, met with the board of finance and took them through some of the same information. And it was a very good meeting, by the way, in terms of sharing of information. So let me talk about a couple of things. First of all, our overall, uh, budget situation. Ken, in, in your packet tonight is a copy of our financial report. Um, and Ken reported that with all the given takes of underruns and overruns, especially due to the COVID spend, he is, um, outlooking that right now, we're about eighty-eight thousand dollars over our budget. Now, the biggest driver in that by far is COVID-related spending. And as you know, the board of finance has agreed they will support us on, you know, making a proper budget adjustment when we get there. So don't, uh, overreact to the eighty-eight thousand. We're still monitoring it with the board of finance. And that's why we went and met, met with them a couple of days later. So, um, so all things considered, there's been, there's not a lot of surprises in the current budget. Um, let me knock off a couple of important things. If you remember when we did our budget last spring, we knew a couple of very specific focus risk areas that we were monitoring. One was we took a two-hundred-thousand-dollar risk entry on our, on our salary line. Um, and Ken's done that, done the piece of work, given the turnover and, uh, that we've seen through the end, the school year. And it is two-hundred-and-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars is what we'd actually, uh, have it in savings due to turning over retirements of more expensive teachers being replaced with newer teachers. So our, the risk we took in our budget of two-hundred-thousand dollars is almost dead nuts, what actually happened. So that's really good news because that's a one-time event that tends to happen, um, at the beginning of the year when we're doing our staffing for the year. So we can almost put that one to bed. On top of that, though, we've had some openings in various roles. Um, and, uh, teachers, custodians, maintenance and clerical roles that while they weren't filled, and many of them have since been filled, uh, we actually have salary savings and that is, we have savings of a hundred and, a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars due to what they then can call unfilled positions or vacancy savings. Um, we hate to have, have vacancy savings. We like to keep our employees and do that. But when you do have, you know, a situation where you have an opening for a period of time, uh, that actually is savings to the budget. And that savings is used to offset our COVID spend. So, um, it's about a hundred and eight thousand of that one forty-three was teachers, but about twenty thousand under run on custodians, eleven thousand on maintenance and three thousand on clerical. So, um, and it was like seven or eight positions and they were, you know, it was three weeks here and five weeks there. It wasn't one big bucket. It was chunks of, uh, chunks of time. So those are, that's another area that is good news for our budget. And the third basic area of the budget, if you remember, we've all been focused on the out, out of district special ed spending. Um, and Mrs. Wygonic and Mr. Post have gone through a very exhaustive, um, analysis of the, what's happened to our children who have been placed out of district. And, you know, if you remember, we always have this issue of there's kids leaving, kids who come in and, and, you know, and, um, how we, uh, how we, uh, those balance out. And we've had some problems the last couple of years that haven't balanced in our favor. Well, this year, we had a budget of two, two-point-one-oh-nine, and right now the outlook is two-point-one-one-five, so about five-thousand-dollar difference. So with the students that we know about, right, we're actually, once again, kind of dead nuts to where the budget was. So that's another good news. So all things considered, those were good news. Um, and then you get to the big discussion we had, which was the COVID spend. And, um, and I'll summarize this at a high level, but there's a sheet that we can share with everybody if you want to see the details. But we had told the board of finance back in Au- August that we were going to spend a little over a million dollars on COVID. And that came in the flavors of money that was spent last year. Um, new spends this year and the items that we approved at, like two meetings ago for the curricular things that would help with the COVID environment. Million twenty-eight. Um, the spend in the current outlook is nine-hundred-and-five-thousand, so a reduction in our COVID spending by about a hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars. That's also good news. So, um, now that is the real reasons for the underrunning, though, is an interesting story. That one was our cost for lunch monitors. We have not been able to staff lunch monitors. We've, we've advertised for the positions and, uh, those, it's been very difficult recruiting people into the job. So while it's a savings, it's not a savings we wanted to have as a savings. And the other is, uh, our, uh, cleaning service bill came in a lot lower, um, than we expected. And it was offset slightly by the desks were more expensive than we thought. So there's a whole bunch of gives and takes, uh, but those are the three big drivers. But net-net, we're down a hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars on our estimate for COVID spend. And, but offsetting that, we're expecting six-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars of savings in our regular budget. And I've talked about the salary savings, that's the biggest single line item, but between, uh, the decisions we've taken on the special education extended school year, the savings there, uh, the life skills program, uh, some of the transportation savings, because we, uh, um, we had five less days of school and so on and so forth. There's about six-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars of underruns in our regular budget items that are help offsetting that million dollars of extra spend. Now, you might say the math of that sounds like three-hundred-thousand, not eighty-eight-thousand. Some of that spend was last year's budget, right? It was not this year's budget. So it's, uh, the net impact on the this year's budget is about eighty-eight-thousand dollars. Um, and we'll continue to monitor that with the, uh, with the, uh, board of finance. And there are other opportunities where we might actually have other underruns. And that's where we will actually save a little, some amount of money when we're actually not having kids in school for two weeks, for example. Um, so a lot of things, a lot of moving pieces, but I would say, all things considered, as a committee, we concluded most of the news was good news. So, um, and being well-managed by Mr. Post and, uh, and the entire administrative staff. So that's kind of what's going on in our budget. We came in right up, dead nuts on the two big risk areas on our budget. Uh, the COVID stuff is actually coming in a little less than we expected. And the savings are a little more than we expected. And the board of finance got all our input. And they thought it was a really good update that, uh, Ken did when we worked together a couple of days after that. So that's kind of where we are on the budget and I'll kind of do, this year's going to be really tricky. So we'll do a report on this. Um, you know, every time, every month when we meet, um, as we, as we go through the year. I'll try to do it more on an incremental update as we go. That was the totality of what we spoke about at our finance committee and I'll entertain any questions you guys might have. Sorry, I took a little longer than I normally do.
That's all right. It was a lot of information.
A lot of the good information about what's happening, and I hope I summarized it in a way that everyone could digest it easily.
Any questions for Bob? Thank you. Uh, now we have, uh, sorry, I probably should have, Joy, did you mention, uh, your special facilities meeting in your last?
Yeah, I combined the two. Yeah.
Great. Um, so then we have Cape.
I want to say I'm so glad that Bob is in charge of the finance committee because he does, he'd really do a great job of explaining things that are really complicated in a digestible way. So I want to thank you for that, Bob. Um, so we had a great, uh, Cape meeting. It was just last week. And this was really, Joy had a great idea. She said, why don't we use the Cape meeting to sometimes be updated on the initiatives that we're approving and budgeting? So we can then bring it back to, uh, the full board and then the community who watches the board meetings. So we had two presentations. The first was from, uh, it was a STEM presentation. So it was from Andrew Hill, who's the STEM department chair at the high school and Robert Sapor, who's the STEM teacher. And they gave us a demonstration of a software. It's called White Box Learning Software. Basically what it is, it's an engineering-type software that the students can utilize either in school, at home, as they're doing all sorts of tasks in developing, um, you know, different things that they would design. So they showed us an example of, uh, something that they would make for somebody who was an amputee. So like a design for a prosthetic. Um, and they, he kind of took us through the software so we could get a sense of what it might be like for a student. So, you know, when we think about being in a hybrid or remote environment, you know, you think, oh God, there's so many disadvantages. But with the right technology, we can really maximize what students are doing. So that was exciting to kind of learn about and see, uh, all the possibilities, uh, of our growing, uh, STEM program at the high school. Uh, and our second presentation was by Dean Renda, our principal at the middle school. And he updated us on a program that began last year. This was a grant that, um, uh, that we were a part of to integrate the arts into social studies. And it was done through, uh, visiting artists. Um, and the idea was to bring the arts into the social studies unit of the American Revolution. And so what's happened is there's been some curriculum planning, uh, on how to integrate it. And unfortunately, the unit was supposed to take place, place last year, but with the, um, you know, us moving to remote, it, it became difficult. But they've salvaged it and they're continuing to work on it, uh, for this year instead. And so, um, it's really working on really interdisciplinary type work where the art will be within the social studies class. Um, they're working out the logistics on whether the resident artists would actually physically be able to come to school. Maybe it's more of a Zoom meeting might be more appropriate depending on where we are, you know, with everything. But the, you know, the exciting part is it's really sort of bringing history to life, uh, through the incorporation of the arts. So I'm sure, uh, our seventh graders at, at Whiskaneer are going to really benefit from that. So, so those were two great presentations. We start to see kind of the development of curriculum and, uh, get a real taste for how things are evolving in our schools.
Jen, can I say something on that?
Yes.
All right. Um, I did speak with, uh, John Michael Parker, who is the head of Arts, it's Arts for Learning in Connecticut. Uh, we had a meeting this morning and, uh, we talked about, um, having virtual art artists, um, have it be virtual. And what they would be able to do is be able to zoom both of our seventh grade social studies classes at the same time. And we are setting up a time for our seventh grade social studies teachers and these artists to collaborate and prepare ahead of time. So hopefully, uh, this will be off and running as long as it has the artists, uh, right after November eighteenth, I think is the date we're, we're shooting for. So we're, we're excited about it.
That's great. Thank you, Dean. Uh, and that was the extent of our meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Jen? All right. Thank you. Okay, uh, up next we have the consent agenda.
I will move that the board approve the items on the consent agenda, which are new hires and the September twenty-twenty financials. Second.
Thanks, Joy. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay. That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, on to new business. Um, we have the twenty-one, twenty-two budget assumptions and priorities. So this is just an action item. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Brill, who can present the, the priorities.
Thank you, Rosa. So, um, each year prior to, um, bringing a budget to the Board of Education, uh, we set up our board assumptions and priorities. What we want to do is really have everybody on the same page and have, have very similar expectations going into the budget seasons of those core pieces that we all are essentially in agreement on. And so if, if you'll indulge me, I'm going to just highlight and go through some of these pieces. Um, there also is a mention in there under, um, operating budget about possibly budgeting, uh, and considering the cost of the pandemic as it may continue. Um, I wanted to put that in there so we could purposely have an intentional point of discussion on that. Um, and thank you, Eric. And, um, you know, when I, it's, this is a two-pager that's up on the screen right now. Uh, when I get through with it, because it's perfectly dovetail tonight with the timing of Mr. Belden's very detailed, um, uh, overview of the finances and, and COVID-related costs. And, uh, you know, the board could, uh, if the board could help give some direction to the, to the admin team, be very helpful. Um, as most, uh, most of you know, on the board, the principals have been working, uh, along with their department heads diligently on the budget, their budgets at each school on each department. Those are due, uh, to TSO on Friday this week. So, you know, with everything else going on, they're also developing their budgets for next year. Uh, it, it feels like the school year hasn't even started and we're already doing that. I kind of say that every year. So anyway, um, what I just want to briefly go through is, um, oh, Joy, I see your comment there. Yeah, we can share the screens. Eric has everything, so he can definitely do that. Um, so a couple of things that are really important in terms of, uh, supporting our, our, our strategic roadmap as we go forward is that our operating budget should provide sufficient and appropriate resources, promote continuous improvement, afford sufficient flexibility to respond to changing needs and contingencies. We're, this is a very flexible board, flexible team. We talked constantly about that. And provide necessary maintenance and improvements to the school facilities and obviously represent value in the eyes of the community. The operating budget itself, um, the first bullet I put in there, and I just wanted, that's why I alerted everybody to it, that I did put in there. And again, it's up for consideration. This is, this ends up being the board's assumptions and priorities, uh, for budgeting. Is provide financial support required to, to sustain our operations, uh, in a pandemic. And, and we're all too familiar with that. Uh, the operating budget also maintains our commitment to ensuring appropriate district and school organizational structures. Um, again, aligned to the strategic plan, maintain, continue to enhance our programs. Um, uh, all the, all the while being responsive to any of the changing needs we have. And that's why we have the dialogue we have and all the work we do. We want to, uh, attract and retain, uh, the best employees we can, or make sure we recruit the best we can. We want to maintain, um, uh, the practices that we have in terms of class size and adjust our staffing patterns as necessary. We're changing enrollment. Provide the necessary resources to address social and emotional needs of students. Uh, we brought ruler in and been working on this for quite a few years, but there's been no, no more of a time in our public school history than right now that we need this, uh, social emotional supports. Um, in addition to that, oop, it's moving there. Uh, thank you, Eric. Uh, after-school programming, we want to make sure we have the resources for, you know, our stipend positions for all the after-school activities and athletics and, uh, all the, all the wonderful enrichment programs we do have here in town. Provide our, uh, support for curriculum, uh, instruction and assessment and digital learning. That is a key piece, especially now, more than ever. Uh, it has been highlighted for us during this pandemic. Provide, um, the staffing support, uh, for the changing enrollment in pre-K, uh, ELL and special education. And we're going to go over the enrollment report tonight. So you'll see some of the adjustments, uh, some, some of the, the enrollment there, and we could talk about that. Obviously, technology infrastructure and PD that goes along with supporting a digital learning environment, it's a key piece in our strategic plan. Of course, meeting all the compliance mandates of the state and federal government. Uh, meaning funding requirements for all of our contracts, not only, um, in terms of collective bargaining, but for transportation, technology versus purchases and all of the, uh, business items that go into, to the cost of doing business, um, in, uh, in public school. Providing the funds to meet all the board of education policies and practices. So if we have something in writing and say, if you say we do it, we must support it. Um, and reflect continuing cost containment efforts, uh, which we always do our, our best to, uh, work on, including participate in our regional efficiencies group, which we are in the Western Connecticut group, going to start bringing back around. Uh, now that it's budget season for all the superintendents. Uh, under curriculum assessment instruction, this is where you'll see probably, um, you know, more, more changes than you saw in the first page. Um, of course, we're going to maintain support for our, uh, curricular tools, the digital curricular tools, um, that impact hybrid and remote, remote learning. We just talked about that a little bit. We want to continue to support the integration of technology and resources into our daily instruction. Uh, and we need to support access to digital texts. Um, the kids are on Chromebooks, even when they're in person in school, they are always working digital, not always, often working digitally. We want to expand, continue to expand our classroom libraries and make sure that they. We want to expand, continue to expand our classroom libraries and make sure that they're standard aligned and integrated with our curriculum. Continue to support faculty capacity. Excuse me, align to student assessments and teacher evaluation data. And that's again, being responsive, uh, as an organization. Continue to develop assessment literacy of our professional staff. Uh, support our curriculum development aligned with the standards, especially for social studies. That we, we know we're moving in that direction. Support ongoing development of standards aligned assessments to support standards based grading. That has not gone away. There was a big project, uh, K through four that we continue to have to work on and we'll continue to work on that, uh, in our schools. Analyze the outcomes of the standards raised, bait, bait, standard based rating and reporting. Um, and utilize professional development time to, uh, enhance that practice. Continue to research and identify, um, our curriculum tools. Um, they're making sure that we're pushing forward in our high school science and K through 12 social studies. Development of our in-house analytics, analytics and data warehouse. Um, we were slowed down a little bit last year. That is going to be a priority this year. Um, working to continue our implementation, uh, Rubicon Atlas. Um, we do want to, um, update our talented and gifted process. That's one of Mrs. Wygonic's goals. She's going to be working on that this year. Uh, when Dr. Sapala moved on, um, that, that, uh, project, uh, was pushed to the side. And this is why I got bringing it back to the forefront of this year. Um, we want to meet the needs of our English language, uh, learning students, uh, and math intervention needs of our students. And these you will recognize as enhancement items, uh, that we worked on last year to have in this year's budget. And with obviously the major cost and concerns with, um, the overage and special education and also the unknowns, what was, what things were going to cost us with COVID. Um, we had to curtail some of those investments. And so we will be going forward with our, um, pushing forward with our T-Sol teacher that we need in the district that we've talked about for a couple of years. Um, the math interventionist, VHS, and, um, uh, exploring the need for tutors at the Center School and at Huckleberry. Uh, in leadership, we want to, uh, continue the improvement of our, our leadership, uh, through the analysis of instruction and providing targeted feedback to faculty. And you can see that dovetails back with under curriculum assessment, working with teacher evaluation data in our faculty. So there's a lot that goes into that and the student assessments. And then finally, under operations and facilities, uh, we, we need to evaluate and plan for the transition to the new elementary school. This involves certifications of teachers, um, structural, uh, structure of the organization in terms of leadership structure and how we're going to work on that. And, and really are in that process now, a little bit delayed because of COVID and all the reopening work this summer, but we're going to be moving on that. On our master planning timeline, uh, this number one is, uh, due for conversation in January, February publicly at the board meeting. We have to look at transportation. We obviously got our start times, enrollment. There's a lot that's going to go into the new school, a lot of planning. Uh, number two, we want to make sure we implement our safety and security plan inclusive of, um, the security task force recommendations. Um, the assessments from homeland security and of course, always working with Chief Purcell and his team at Brookfield Boys Department. Uh, we want to upgrade our classroom presentation and digital integration technology at the high school, uh, and begin at Whiskaneer. That was slowed a little bit with some of the curtailing we had to do with budget from last year's development to this year, as well as the needs for other digital technology rather than purchasing some of the presentation stations in this current year. Um, continue to advocate and plan for the upgrade of our athletic facilities, um, and the ball fields. That is actually under the auspices of the Park and Recs Department, but we obviously, they're a big time partner of ours and we want to work together with them. And then obviously, uh, Mr. Post has mentioned this a couple of times and he's talked with the finance committee about this. Um, we'll be coming up this year to get ready to bid for a new transportation contract. So quite a bit there and we don't even have a budget presentation yet, but there's a lot we have to do. It helps give guidance to the board, guidance to central office and certainly to, um, our dedicated building administrators who are developing their school plans, uh, the budget plans right now. So I don't know if anybody has any questions, wants to talk about that a little bit?
Joy raised her hand.
Okay.
Um, it's not so much a question, but, um, a comment. So, you know, an expectation I feel that is going to be really important to see is an item under curriculum assessment instruction that addresses, you know, our new gaps due to COVID or our current, you know, regression. You know, we're going to need a lot of remedial help for so many, you know, all content areas are taking a big hit. But I think writing has taken a huge hit, given the challenges, you know, for real authentic writing experiences. So, you know, before we hit the budget head on, you know, I ask at least that you really think about, you know, how are, how are we going to really truly create a budget, you know, without sa- solid data to support these gaps or address, you know, this regression that we're facing right now. Um, like yes, we need to continue to push forward the curriculum, absolutely. But, you know, how are we really going to adapt to this regression? So I think we really need to have something under that topic. Um, and I don't know if you've had discussions about that or have had that in your mind.
Well, Joy, it's, it's great. It, it, maybe I can update the language on that a little bit, but it really to me applies under, specifically under number 14 and it could fit in other areas, but those are some of the known intervention areas that we've needed to work on. And to your point, there will be other gaps. Um, we are moving forward, uh, through this fall with our district assessments to see where the students are. And that's one of the things that was on the master planning timeline for last meeting was talking about that. And our building administrators, um, to your point, won't have all the data necessarily by this Friday when they produce their budgets for us, but we have to meet our timelines. Um, but we'll be, it's an iterative process as we go through this for sure. There's no doubt.
I know we have number 14, but that was kind, what we had really as a budget assumption last year too. So that's, to me, it's not like a current need because we had that need last year. Um, we've kind of always wanted that. I almost feel like we need more.
Yeah. No, I disagree. Is, is that Dr. Ruby?
Yeah. So Joy, just so you know, um, we have been talking about assessments. Um, we always talk about assessments. People don't always want to hear about assessments, but, um, we've been talking about our benchmark assessments and I can tell you that, uh, one of the, one of the conversations we had this week was, um, doing the evaluation of writing prompts uh, at the middle school. So we are assessing and we are provide, when we have that assessment data analyzed, we will continue to provide, um, support for students. Um, and I acknowledge what you're saying. It's not the same as it was previously. But I, I don't want, and I don't think you're saying this, but I don't want anybody to think that we're not assessing students. Um, we, we in fact are, we changed our assessment window a little bit this year to allow for the integration of children into the system and for, um, our teachers to focus on acclimating kids back into school after having been out for so many weeks, you know, at the end of the spring and the whole summer gap. And our focus was on, um, acclimating, integrating and social emotional development, but that was not at the expense of our curriculum. And so we are, as a matter of fact, we met today because with the closure yesterday, it was just as much of a surprise to, you know, to all of us as it was to all of the community. And we, um, we had made a decision early on, um, in the year that we were not going to be doing, um, remote testing with, um, say, for example, STAR. We're going to find a way for our remote children to be able to come in so that we could, could preserve the reliability and validity of the assessments. But given the fact that our window was closing quickly, um, for, um, first, uh, the first benchmark assessment, we made a decision today to, um, do our STAR assessment for reading and math, especially at the middle school in a remote way because Renaissance Learning, which is the company that provides STAR, provides for remote assessment. And, you know, we have safeguards to the best as we can to ensure the validity and reliability of the data that we, um, obtain. So, all that said, I just want to assure you that assessment hasn't gone by the wayside, nor has our dealing with the assessment data to provide support to kids. So I, I don't know if you have any further questions that maybe I can either answer now or get you answers on?
No, well, I want you to understand I'm coming from, so I'm not insinuating that we're not assessing. You know, I know that there's a pause on that, especially with STAR. Um, given the situation that we're in, I don't doubt that we're going to continue our practices and our best practices for, you know, assessing and evaluating students. My concern is we are facing regression with the students, um, and there are going to be gaps. So how are we going to reflect a budget that is going to close those gaps? Um, I'm also thinking personally in my, in, you know, working with children every day, I see them, you know, on the forefront, writing being very glaring. Um, because it's so hard to do that online and given that so many of our students are remote. And
All of them right now.
Well, yes, all of them right now. But, and some are, you know, homeschooled based on the situation. So I think that we're entering a, you know, a, a new era of, we're going to see a drop in scores and things like that. So.
And, and so Joy, if I can just address, I act, absolutely, uh, agree with what you're saying. And so just to, um, provide you with some other information. Um, at the middle school, because, uh, Whiskaneer is our Title I school. Dean and I have been working, um, to use our Title I funds and I wrote the grant for, um, tutors for literacy uh, and for math to, um, because that's, that can be considered supplemental. Um, it's not something that was primarily the responsibility of the school district. Um, so we're providing, um, what we actually have on our, um, recruitment site, um, positions for tutors for literacy and for math. And we're very stringent of, uh, about what the qualifications are for, uh, literacy tutors. And one of the things that I think the reason why, um, Dr. Brill was referring to number 14 is because where we see the largest, um, gap in, um, in, in student proficiency is with our, um, our immigrant students and our EL students. And we currently are, um, you know, not staffed to capacity, um, to, to keep those kids. And, and a lot of our EL students are remote for, um, cultural reasons. Um, so, you know, that, that right, not right there in number 14, that's very important for closing gaps. And we have the tutor situation. And then in human resources, we look at the human resources that we have and how we're deploying them. And so when that, um, when the benchmark or uh, beginning of the year, the BOI, um, benchmark data comes in, that's when I will sit and, and Deb Farias will sit with both, um, Melissa and Mary Rose in the elementary schools and look at how we're utilizing our, our human resources in terms of reading teachers and special education teachers relative to the, the alignment with what the data are telling us. And, uh, because we, they're not Title I schools, so we can't use Title I funding for support there. But don't, I think you know that, um, you know, people don't always like it, but I'm not shy about letting you know what we need. So when we have that data, um, which will be coming in over the next two weeks, we will be looking at that with, uh, very wide eyes. And if we feel that we need, um, more support, we'll definitely be asking for it. I will tell you the other thing, Dean and I have been working very, very closely. And we have just recently designed and gotten approved using our Title I, um, monies, projecting what you're, exactly what you're saying. And we have just recently, uh, actually about seven days ago, gotten approval for using some of our Title I funds for, um, summer school for next year, for, um, you know, kept, being able to catch kids up. So it is absolutely on our radar. And I appreciate the fact that it's on yours too, because we need your support.
And, and although I think, you know, it's important for Whiskaneer type, being Title I, but, um, I think a lot of our energy needs to be at the elementary level too. I mean, our most, um, vulnerable children at such a young age. You know, for example, first grade, I mean, they, they're coming in really, you know, I think they're the most vulnerable grade level at this point. Um, so
I agree.
To, you know, math tutors, I don't, I don't think enough.
I agree. And so I hope you won't be surprised if you see in the budget, um, a request for funding for summer school for the, um, elementary schools so that we can provide, um, ex- extra support for those children. Uh, when we look at our EOI data, because like I just shared, we have it kind of covered for Whiskaneer with our, um, title funding. But we do not for, um, uh, Center School and Huckleberry. And when we look at all the efforts that we put forth for this, uh, current academic year, given the situation that we're in, when we get that EOI data at the end of the year, we, um, anticipate at this point in time that we are going to need funds to sup- to support services for, um, children over the summer. So you kind of preempted that. I, I would be, um, definitely looking for that in our budget request.
But that's great. I have no doubt that you will be wearing rose colored glasses.
Yep. Thank you very much. I appreciate the fact that you brought it up. It makes it easier for me.
I really do appreciate you bringing that up because that is, you know, it, it's so early in the process. Uh, I don't present till I think December 2nd. Um, we're working a little, you know, after that with the finance committee and then, and then obviously through December and January before we turn things over to, to Mr. Dunn. So, um, there's still a lot of work to do. And we don't, we don't move without our principals and their leadership and what they bring to us, you know, directly from, from working with their staff. Is there any other questions or anything else anybody else wants to talk about regarding?
So Joy, does that, does, you know, does all of that sort of, um, uh, is there something else that you wanted? Does that sort of suffice? Does that answer suffice?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, you know, put out there my expectation as far as, um, these budget priorities. And to make sure we had that, keeping that in the back of our head, in our mind.
I am curious though, when Dr. Ruby, you mentioned, you know, summer school for elementary school, which, um, may be appropriate. But, you know, I think just kind of reflecting off of what Joy said, if there's, if we're not just looking at sort of, you know, special populations of students and if we might see, you know, more of a widespread sort of issues in, in gaps and learning, you know, is summer school really sort of the answer for that? Or is there, you know, something that we can be more proactive about, you know, doing during the school year to kind of, so that we're not addressing problems after?
We are. So that's a double barrelled question. We absolutely are addressing problems, um, during the year. Um, but what, when we get to the end of the year, we know that we're going to have kids that are still, um, needing support. And this is not for special populations. This is for regular ed populations. So if I can expand upon what I was talking about with the Title I funds for, um, our Whiskaneer population, since that's a school, because of the size and because it, it, there's a variety of, um, of variables that go into identifying which, which school or which grades are Title I. When we provide, have money that we can use legally for Title, what, for Title I services, that does not preclude having other children included in there. So this is, this is not a special ed, um, um, or, or solely special, um, population services. We're, we're looking at, because we have the summer, the summer program for special ed students. This is a general education, um, initiative. And we're not going to, I don't want to give anybody the impression that we're going to, it's like a wait and fail. Um, um, program, absolutely. You know, that would be ridiculous. We would never do that. But we can with certainty say that given all of the variables that families and students and, and the educational system is dealing with during this year, there are going to be children who will not be at the place, um, where we would expect them to be under typical circumstances. And so we want to be thinking ahead and providing for those. And that will be in this budget because that will be for in the next budget year. Now, were we to have, uh, the ability at this point in time to ask for, um, more, um, tutoring support at the, two elementary schools and as well as at the high school. We knew that we needed, last year, we knew that we needed math interventionists at the high school, which is why we asked for that. But if we were in a position right now to say, oh, Board of Ed, by the way, could you help us out because we really believe that we need to have more, um, support services in our schools because of the situation that we're in. Uh, you know, we certainly would do that, but that's not, we're not in that budget year. We're, that, but that ship sailed. So we will be using all of the personnel that we currently have and redeploying them as is most appropriate when we evaluate the, the data from the BOI assessments. But we're not, we're not like waiting, we're not sitting back and going, oh, well, we'll just wait till the summer. And I don't, I don't think you thought that I said that, but I just want to make it clear, not saying that.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think, I think that was clear. I think I just, you know, I just wanted to be sure that we're, we're looking at the sort of proactively and thinking, you know, is, is that the best way to make sure that every kid sort of, you know, is getting what they need throughout the year. So, but.
Thank you.
Anybody else with uh questions on this? Yeah, Debbie, go ahead.
I guess um what I'm wondering is, you know, now that we're facing sort of the second wave of COVID. Um, is there anything that we can say we've learned from going through this that we would change for next year? Well, you know, we hope that after this year, we don't have to worry about COVID or any other kind of pandemic. But in the event that something else happens next year, you know, we don't want to lo- look back and say, oh, well, we should have added this or um, you know, done things differently. So I know that it looks like you've included a lot of um technology resources, but just in terms of staffing or programs or curriculum, maybe around the topic of mental health and support for students, um, maybe staffing in terms of nursing staff, you know, do you do you feel like we've, do you feel like there's anything we would do differently going forward to be better prepared for a public health crisis like we're dealing with now? And maybe you, maybe it's all in here, but that's just sort of what I keep thinking.
Yeah, I think Deb, um, we've, we've been doing a lot of reflecting and have a lot of lessons learned. I think a lot of it's reflected in here. Um, it's going to be interesting to see where the principles are coming from on on Friday with some of the things they're seeing and and real needs. I think we had a big discussion on it just now, other things we learned. Um, I would say maybe proactively we budget for a COVID coordinator, so I don't have to do it again next year, to be very honest with you, considering the cost. And that goes to nursing and health staff and things like that. Um, the continuous investment in um all kinds of 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 technology, not only learning technology, uh but but the hard so hard uh technologies like devices. You know, we really need to make a move there and we'll be working with Eric and his department quite a bit because the reality is with being victimized, frankly, like like many school districts, not only in Connecticut, but across the nation and across the world in terms of the supply chain. Um, it's been very difficult to ensure that all the kids have a proper device at home for exactly the circumstance we're in, but also hybrid and in person, even when we're hybrid or eventually in person with all the digital work we do. And the fact that the kids, you know, really can't congregate and collaborate like like we used to. So um, I'd say, you know, right off the top of my head, those are some of the biggies. Um, and any evolution, and that's why I said the budget development process is derivative as we go through the fall. Um, because we continuously collaborate and generate the ideas based on the data and the feedback we're getting. And the questions that you you, the great questions you guys are asking tonight.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to, I, I have a question for the board. I wasn't sure um the board's comfort level um or feelings about how, and we don't have to answer the question pragmatically, how we go about doing it. Um, but budgeting for a pandemic, when I put that on page one as the uh the first bullet under um, it's important that the board's operating budget. Be ready for that. Is, you know, this, and I think we could talk about it maybe at the next finance committee meeting and get some suggestions from the group. But uh, and I know Mr. Post has some ideas, but really thinking through almost on, is there a parallel budget that we keep track of? Uh, or do we integrate it into the regular operating budget? Because we've got, we we, we're living through those costs right now. We have a great handle on them. So um, I think it's important that we're paying attention to it and we are budgeting for it. And then whether we include it in the actual operating budget or it's a side piece that we're very communicative about with the with the town. I I need some advice on that. And that's why I wanted to make sure it was in this document so we could talk about it either a little bit tonight and then, you know, at our next meeting as well.
Well, let me suggest we talk about it at our next finance committee meeting.
Okay.
Uh, and bring it back because I I actually think that's a tricky dribble with this budget.
Sure.
And it's gonna need to be very transparent and maybe have cases, right? You know, if we have to be hybrid, here's the range. If we have to, we're gonna be out, here's the impact. I'm hoping it's a lot less than this year because we added a lot of the physical hardware stuff we needed to this year already. But I fully expect there's P P E related things and and some of the staffing things and things like that.
Sure. Okay.
So I I do, I, you know, I'd like to hear Mr. Post's ideas. I'm sure the finance committee would do it. But I think in the end, as a board, we're going to need to be very transparent in our thinking on this topic. So.
Yep. Thank you, Bob.
Anyone else have any questions? Or comments? Okay. So I think we can uh move on and um let's move on to the district enrollment report. And this is also just another action. Uh, and I will allow Dr. Brill to go through that.
All right. So we have a enrollment report. Um, the State Department of Education uh has each school district by October first, you all know this, uh reporting officially on its enrollment. Um, this was quite a difficult task this year with tracking where the students are and the option for remote. And again, the pandemic is really the 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 uh the underlying theme of of every decision we're making. You know, it's just changed how we we operate. So you have, uh, we do a four year comparison typically each year, uh pre K through twelve. We also include special populations on here. It's important to note that this is a snapshot in time and literally every single day enrollment changes. There's puts and takes, move ins and move outs every single day um in our school district. It's not unusual. And so this is what the enrollment was on October first. And then the special populations that I'll review with you are are the number of outplaced children, just a general statement of the report on that. Um, and Eric, actually, if you could scroll um to the to the next slide. And also a um report on free reduced lunch, English language learners and our um uh, what was it? Our uh general special education um in in terms of the overriding number for the district. Uh, it's also important to know that next week, Dr. Ruby will presenting the class size reports, which dovetail with this report. It's kind of the order we put this in. So there's a, there's a coherence and logic to how we share this information with the board and the public. Um, so what you can see is as you go down in the very uh, the right hand column, um, the is the comparison of last year to this year, which is the twenty twenty uh October one. And as you can see, uh in our primary grades, um in pre K and in kindergarten, we're down right now. Um, uh, by a significant amount in kindergarten, we've been talking about that and reporting out since July. It's been a concern of ours and certainly Mrs. Diamond's since um the springtime when we were doing kindergarten registration. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about that. I'm sure there's some questions on that uh when I finish this part of the report. Uh, as you can see, you know, there there's always uh puts and takes. We're up a little in first grade. Overall, um, we're down fifty three at Center School. And again, that's because of kindergarten enrollment. We've been, and we'll talk about that. And our, and also how it relates to budget and our planning. Um, you can see at Huckleberry, we are down a net of, what is it, about thirteen there uh as we look at things. Um, and again, our primary students, many of those students, uh, there's, there's kids who parents made decisions for homeschooling and other things. Um, we can, we can talk about that in a little bit more detail. At the middle school, we are, we are down um about forty two students overall. There was a major bubble grade, which was last year's eighth grade. That is now in ninth grade. And you can see that that is reflected actually um in the the Brookfield High School report by grade. There's, there's an uptick in students there. Uh, on October first, it was nine hundred and two. I think last time I talked to Mr. Blandit was nine oh six. So um, there's always kids uh moving in now. As of October first, we had a total of two thousand five hundred and thirty four kids. Um, which is uh down from last year at this time. Um, our our outplace student number um as to being an outplaced uh program. And many of our other students either coming back to us or graduating or whatever the case may be. Um, so that number has remained steady and this is why Gannick continues to monitor uh those programs. Um, and I'm sorry, grand total, two thousand five hundred and sixty four. We include our outplace students in our numbers. Special education, uh, we have three hundred and fifty nine students identified this year. That's down twenty two from last year. Uh, English language learners, uh, actually, let me go to the total free and reduced lunch, then I'll go to EL students. Uh, free and reduced lunch, those are students that are economically disadvantaged, is down by four this year for five hundred and forty one students. And again, much of this is affected by that, those primary grades that you see, especially kindergarten. There's the 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 students in K, those forty four kids, many of those kids, men, number of those kids might fall into some of these areas. Interesting with English language learners, a couple of things to talk about there. Number one, the state is giving us until November first for the official census. Um, because um student uh immigrant families are not moving into the country right now because of the pandemic. You know, there's significant limitations on that. So we anticipate that we'll get some more. Um, we also have a bump in January typically or February because of the differential in seasons with the Southern Hemisphere. Um, and students moving in at that time. So we can't bank necessarily on being twenty six down. And is there some, does this mean something right now? In addition to that, Dr. Ruby alluded to, um, you know, and not that it kind of doesn't count in the remote students, but um there are cultural reasons um that have been shared with administration and with with teachers for students uh deciding to not be enrolled uh as well. So there's, there's a lot of dynamics, a lot of the, for every student and every family, there's a different story. And so, you know, that that's what we have going on there. Um, but that's the enrollment report and um we'll talk about the impact on class size uh going forward. I I don't know if there's any questions or anything people are wondering about. Certainly open the floor.
John, I just have a question with the E L L. Is any of those, is that number reflective of students that tested out of the program? What's the, I don't know if you have that number.
We, we always have students that are testing out. But in past normal years, we always have students that are coming in.
Okay.
So the, across the state, the number of students coming in has been um decreased due to the difficulty uh for families from other countries to join their family members that are here. That's what usually happens. You know, one family establishes itself. And in our community, it's typically in the greater Danbury area. And then we have people that um have um come to the United States in the greater Danbury area and find um residents in Brookfield. And then more uh of their family members, when they hear about what, you know, um a welcoming community it is and what a good life it is, they join. That hasn't occurred this year in our community, um, as well as in other communities in the state. Um, due to the the situation that we're in. So there is an overall decrease. The, it's anticipated that, you know, this is, this is a short term thing. Additionally, um, what like John said, we typically see an increase in our um our E L um constituency in uh January when the uh s- students move from South America um because of the break in their school year, which is different from ours. Um, we don't know if we're going to see that in January, you know, it's going to depend on what the um the the COVID data are um are showing and what the immigration rules and regulations are. But I I just want to make a point, if we went back and looked at the data that we had when we were under a hundred um, uh, two and a half, three years ago, and we requested a second uh T S A L teacher. And because of our, you know, our budgetary constraints, we gave, you know, we gave up that request and we went to to Paris. I'll parenthetically add in here that what we've done is we've developed a really wonderful training um ground in Brookfield for our neighbors, and I'm sure they appreciate it. Um, what we've done is we've brought in the tutors that were um in our budget. And uh, Kemen and our current T S A L teacher, Karina. Um, and thank funding for professional development for our T S A L tutors has created a situation where we've provided wonderful professional development on the um KELP standards and on PSYOP and a number of other initiatives that we've taken in the district to our tutors so that they could better serve our children. And they simultaneously, a couple of them have enrolled in the alternative route to certification program for T S A L certification at the state. And they've been able to use their time in teaching our students in Brookfield as their um semi-whatever is required student, I'll call it student teaching because we all understand that. And they have, um, they've become certified T S A L teachers and they've been hired by Danbury and New Fairfield, so they've left us. So by having our tutors, we've provided a Band-Aid for our needs in district. But it hasn't served us well because we've provided them with the opportunity to do their student teaching and to have uh Ben and our teacher um tutor them and use our board funds for professional development. And they've gone on and gotten full time T S A L positions in Danbury and New Milford. And quite frankly, we would have liked to have had those, some of those folks as our own full time employees. So it's not, while it's worked out, um, sort of for our children, it hasn't worked out. It's, it's not been, um, you know, if you talk about an ROI, it hasn't been a good ROI for the for the district. That was probably more than you wanted, but I just really need to share.
Yeah, I I really just wanted to know, so are the number of students who are tested out, is that minimal is what you're telling me? Just so we can have.
We do, no, we do a great job testing people out and that'll be, we can give you that in our upcoming report.
Yeah, Kemen can give us that, that'd be great.
But it's, but it's an ebb and a flow. As many, we actually are one of the better districts in the state because we've had, like I just said, with our tutors, we've done such a great job. Um, and we exited, uh, we exit at a higher rate. And if Kemen was there, she can give you all those numbers off the top of her head. Um, then other, but we have, what what goes out comes in. It's a kind of a steady flow. This year, the in has just slowed down because of the the variables that I explained.
Oh, yeah, if she can give us that data, that information, that'll at least give us
Absolutely.
perspective as far as dealing with that number.
And I'll tell you, Joy, that um we actually, the State Department um in the E L division refers other in the state to us to get hints on, you know, what are we doing? Because our data are s- are so strong in terms of the work that we do with our our uh folks. But we put, we put a tremendous amount of work into um the uh human resources that we have. And then they bleed out. So we're constantly redoing the same thing.
Okay, so could I ask a question about kindergarten and first grade? Um, so the, we obviously have a big drop this year. Um, what do we know about the, in any level of detail about why did it drop? And then what are the implications about what are we going to assume for our budget next year? I mean, and let me just paint a picture. If P, if the parents are, are they holding kids back from going to kindergarten? And we're going to have a big bubble of kindergartners next year? Um, because that holdbacks all of a sudden are going to come with the regular, normal uh enrollments and then there's more. Or are they doing kindergarten at home and they'll go right into first grade? Or I mean, all of those have big implications for our budget for next year in terms of how many sections we're going to need in kindergarten or first grade.
Absolutely true.
We have insights on why it's one thirty instead of one seventy and what we think what will mean for next year.
Yeah, so just to start, start off and certainly um Maureen or Mary Rose or Ken, please jump in at any time. Uh, so a couple of things, Bob, to to, it's a great question because we need to know where where the students are, right? Um, so Mary Rose has information, we are going to reach out uh to this between forty and fifty number of uh students uh to their families to do a little survey um and and keep reaching out to them to see where they're at and what their intentions are. Um, but there, there are some that, it's a very small amount, uh, two uh we have is homeschooling. Um, we have one right now, um, keeping home for an additional year, uh, but indicating that they're not homeschooling. So we have those things going on. Remember, kindergarten doesn't have to come to kindergarten. Um, eleven, which this is a very good sign, are in private kindergarten. Four are at magnet uh programs right now. Um, three moved out town. So that was something we projected, but they're not with us now. Uh, there are six that by age are spending an additional year in pre K. Uh, but we have almost twenty that we don't have information on that we need to find out about. So to your point, Bob, we're on the case. Um, we have some, we have more than half of the information and we know what those children are doing with their families and what their intentions are. Um, in terms of budget implication, uh, right now, I believe we have eighteen total sections at Center School between uh nine and nine, K and one. And um our projections for Malone and McBroom have been right on. Um, and and I know Ken probably has that information with him and could talk to that if he needs to. Um, and so what we've asked Mary Rose to do is she's been putting her budget together is to think about what needs to be done, what do we need to be ready for? So if we have that, that concept of, I'll just keep my child out and and have them go to kindergarten next year, a year older, and we have a bubble in kindergarten that probably will impact first grade and we have less students in first grade. And what does that mean for our teachers? Um, projection wise, our total projection for both grades has been spot on. So we should know the number of students. It's going to be those decisions and that iterative process over the course of the fall and into the winter. Um, but I'd like to defer to Mary Rose if she had any other insights she wanted to share. We've been talking about this.
John?
Maureen, please.
Do you want to talk about the survey that we're going to do?
Sure, why don't you talk about it, Maureen, please?
So we, uh, Bob, we've had exactly the same concerns and thoughts that you just expressed. And so we have decided to, for the, you know, Mary Rose and her team have been trying to track down everybody for those, I think it was twenty students, because that could be a class, a little bit more than a class. Um, students that we're talking about that we're not really sure of what the status is. We're going to send out a survey. Um, it will be by the end of this week, the beginning of next week to try to gather um data and intentional um disposition from the parents of those of students so that we know, you know, really where they are. Because as, as you're probably thinking, that could be a, a whole nother class uh of kindergarteners, which will present for the district in terms of future planning that um, that bubble class that we see from time to time. That would be not just for next year, but would be a bubble class that would be moving through the system for the next um thirteen years.
Well, we might have a bubble small class and a bubble followed by a bubble big class and.
You're, you, that's right.
I mean, it, it actually has, it's, it's very, provides very interesting staffing issues that will live with us for twelve years.
Yes, you're right. You're absolutely right. So we're, we are thinking the exact same thing that you're thinking and we are, uh, we're, we're working on it as, as we sit here, basically.
So, and so, but when we come back and look at the budget, I think that's going to be a very important set of assumptions of what, what do we, what are we building our budget on? Uh, we don't need the answer tonight. I was kind of more interested in your insights for tonight. But that was really useful to kind of go through what did we learn? And if Mary Rose has other insights, that would be useful too, so.
No, as, as you're saying, that's did summer, um, as we're um registering, we had a different registration process this year as well. So families, because it was online when they were registering, they, they uh filled out a pre-enrollment form. So we got their information um right at the beginning, which doesn't always happen. Um, sometimes parents will, prior to that, uh, prior to doing it online, um, parents could pull a packet, they could download information. We didn't know who was pulling that information uh or what their intention was. So one of the advantages to doing it the way we did it this year, necessity, but hopefully this will be a positive outcome um is that we were able to really tell who was looking. So we know that there are forty-nine students, forty-nine people who were interested in kindergarten at Center School who then did not ultimately, you know, uh enroll. So we can go back and Sean was saying, we went down, we broke it back, uh broke it down that way and we'll, we'll, we'll do the surveys, Maureen mentioned um and get more information. But as, as both of them have been saying, we've been talking about this since June, uh, since May, really. When, when we saw that the numbers were coming in, like what are we going to do? What are our thoughts? You know, kindergarten is an optional year. Um, and so there's that whole piece as well. You know, some parents keep their kids out until first grade anyway. So we want to have some conversations, we want to do some really good assessments of students as they enroll. Uh, and we know they're coming next year to kind of figure out where, where their skills lie. Um, and you know, their age and look at all those, those pieces to figure out what's going to make the most sense for each student um as well as for us as a school. So we're anticipating the same number of students. It's just as we're saying, it'll, you know, how it breaks down and where they end up and, and how we configure our, our, our classes and our instruction is going to um be impacted by, by kind of who walks through the door.
And just to reinforce what Mary Rose is saying, uh, combined grade K and one, our projection that we built our budget on for this year was three hundred and seventy-three students. And the combined K and one projection for next year is one hundred or three hundred and seventy-seven. So it's only four students different.
Oh, may mix differently, but it's about the, it's, it's more about
Correct.
intersection.
Correct.
And I think mitigating, like you were saying, we, we, again, that, that idea that we don't, you know, again, the small bubble and the big bubble uh pose different issues as they go and it's going to get more complicated as, as they move through the grade. So if we can try to figure out how to, how to minimize that while also making sure we're serving students, um, that, that'll be our, our goal as well.
Um, all right, change subjects. I have one other question, which was actually for Dean. Um, is I, I, one of the things I was looking at when we were, when you were going through the numbers was I was looking at cohorts, you know, looking at last year's kindergarten to this year's first grade and last year's first grade to this year's second grade. And they're almost all, you know, plus or minus, you know, four or five kids with one exception, which is
Fifth to sixth.
Fifth to sixth. And was there a big thing that went in? I was like, it's double digits in terms of growth or was it just happened to be a bubble of kids who moved into town?
It's literally like that a, a bunch of years because we get the students that come over from AIS. Um, and then in the past, I think, uh, you know, we've gotten students from St. Joe's and obviously we have other moving, you know, with that move in. But the bigger number usually is because of the number of students that we get from AIS is a part of that. But we average over the years, last time I did it, probably about ten or twelve new students to sixth grade. The difference from fifth grade to sixth grade.
It's all right there, fifth to sixth. That's interesting. So, but, but when I started asking my question, I heard you say fifth to sixth, you knew exactly.
I knew exactly what you're talking about.
Uh, I noticed, in fact, if I kind of do that, the cohort analysis all from, in the whole district, basically the minus seventy-five is we graduated a class of two hundred and two and our kindergarten class is one thirty-two. And so there's seventy fewer net in the district just for that dynamic. And, and the rest is little pluses and minuses all the way up and down. So, and that one happened to be the biggest plus, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else with any questions or comments on the enrollment report? Okay. Uh, so let's move down, move on to the uh twenty-one, twenty-two draft school calendar. Um, another um just action item. So um, we can pull that up, Eric, and take a look at it.
Okay, so we have a calendar here. Uh, we built this calendar in a, assuming a traditional year next year. Um, as we all know, we changed this current year's calendar two or three times because of the pandemic. So um, we need to start somewhere. And we have a, a, a very uh solid calendar based on those uh traditional pieces. Just some quick highlights, remember this is to receive, to digest. We could put it on the next agenda and ultimately approve it as a board. Or if it takes another uh iteration into uh early December to approve it, that's fine too. I know our families like to get the, families and staff like to get these calendars uh as much in advance as possible. But then again, we're in a different world now and people have either become more patient and flexible or uh more irritable, either one. So probably the sooner we get this done, the better for everyone. Uh, so anyway, you know, the couple of uh highlights there, uh, the um school year still starts toward the end of August and we have our days for new teacher orientation and our three days for teacher professional development. Uh, teacher professional development also uh continues as a workday on Columbus Day where the students would not be in school, but teachers would have PD uh as well as Election Day in November. We also have built in uh throughout December, uh January, April and May. Uh, it's kind of that pumpkin color uh is the uh PLC days for more teaching, uh more professional development opportunities. Uh, we have our, our conferences built in, we have our typical winter uh vacation shortened, February break, uh April recess built in there. And um while we start before uh Labor Day in this iteration of the calendar, we end on June thirteenth. So those are the really the, the big highlights for everybody um that I just wanted to put out there. Didn't know if anybody had any questions or, you know, you had it in your packet since Friday, so I don't know if people had a, something that's come up that they were interested in talking about.
Just a, just a really small logistical, can we pick like a different color? I feel like the blue, family, green, it's very, they're very close and it's, it's a little confusing. Maybe like a red or a gray.
I'll take the blame on that because I have to thank Mrs. Grambling for all of her work on that. But sometimes I get a little overly involved in these things and I try to channel my inner artist. And so I'll take the blame on that and we could adjust, we could adjust colors to make them clearer for people and, and more to be able to differentiate. But I do need to thank Lisa as well for the great work on it.
Yes, we love you, Lisa, we appreciate it.
But you know, any thoughts anybody's having or um concerns or, you know, a, a, a total different direction to the, the way we approach the calendar? Any thinking? And, and again, we do not have to make, and there's no pressure to approve this tonight. We give people time to digest it, think about it and put it on the agenda again, under old business for an approval uh at our, I think it's in November sixth or seventh meeting. There, no, when's our, when is our next meeting, guys? Our next, we have
Number fourth.
Yeah, it's after Election Day, November fourth.
Yes, right.
And that's the only at a regular board meeting in November.
Yep. Um, so our, our snow day policy hasn't really changed, right? And that also might change again because we might not have any snow days.
Yeah.
Um. Okay.
Yeah, so we, we, we add them till the end and then um it, it would have to be pretty catastrophic in the number of snow days if we even have to take them this year, make up days uh to touch April vacation. We really try to keep that safe
Right.
people, so people could count on that as the long vacation as well as the winter break. Where they can get away with their families. And let's hope people can do that this year. Next year, excuse me.
Anyone have any questions or comments on this? All right, um, so John, did you want us to approve this tonight or do you want to?
We, well, that's why I wanted to say that there's no pressure to, to, it's, it's still early. We, I think, I think early in my tenure in Brookfield, the tradition was to break, break this out in December for the first time. And it took sometimes till February to get it approved. So we really, I was asked a number of years ago to move it earlier, so we've done that. Um, we have the gift of time, we don't have to do it. But again, whatever, if the board would like to approve it, if everybody's comfortable, we can. Again, we could wait till the next regular meeting, it, it's totally up to the board.
How does everyone else feel about this? Do you feel comfortable approving tonight? Or do you want to just wait because we are a little early in the, in the year to be doing this?
I guess the only question would be, is there anything we're going to learn that might come up that might cause us to adjust between now and say February, right? Because I prefer to just, if there's things what might come up that we might say, hey, we'd adjust it, I'd say, hold off and let's learn that thing, learn that stuff and then approve it as opposed to having to improve it and then amend it. I mean, in my view. So, but if you don't think there's a lot of forces out there, John, that would change things, let's go ahead and approve it.
Yeah, I mean, I, we, a, as, as we all know, we, we never project, predicted what was going to happen this past March, right? And then, then all the adjustments we had to make in June and July on our, on the current calendar. So other than that, um, you know, we, we want to spread out our PD days and uh honor our conferences and, and, you know, the different holidays in the year. And so that's, that's what we have laid out here.
And they're pretty coordinated with other districts so that, like we've done in the past.
Well, what we do do is um Lisa consults the regional calendar that Ed Vance puts out. Um, and while we don't have to adhere to that, um, it gives us flavor of the region. And so it's in relative alignment, I would say, uh, but certainly not lockstep, I couldn't, couldn't say that.
Do you think we'd anticipate any changes in the number of student days this year? I mean, obviously last year we couldn't predict, you know, the changes that we had sort of at the end of the year, but.
Yeah, I mean, we plan for the one eighty-two. Uh, we need to always keep in mind our teachers' work on, our contract for one hundred and eighty-seven, so that we have to always keep those, those two factors in mind. Uh, this current year, so we're not talking about that, the state gave us the one seventy-seven. So, you know, we only have the mandate for that, but next year it's, it would likely go back to a hundred and eighty days that we'd have to do. Uh, we have in town before, I think we've, uh, there was one year we had so many snow days, we dropped it from one eighty-two down to one eighty so we could finish, I think, on a Thursday or Friday prior to the weekend. Uh, we did make that move before. But again, these things, the, the year has to unfold and life has to happen for us to make those adjustments.
Okay, I'm okay approving it.
I am too. Joy, Mike?
Yeah, I'm okay.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'm okay with me.
Okay. All right.
Make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I move to make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school calendar.
Second. Okay, any further discussion on this? Okay, so all in favor? Aye. Okay, that's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
But you never thought you'd have this approved in, in, in the month of October, John?
And thi, this, this might be a record. And, and somebody else is, I think Bethel one time approved two calendars, two years in advance on their calendars. But it was because, because of their construction project, they wanted to do something there. But we're okay there.
Okay. So uh we can move on to the prioritize twenty-one, twenty-two and updated ten-year prioritized capital projects discussion and a possible approval. So if we can pull that one up, Eric, that would be helpful. And then Ken, are you walking us through this one?
Yes.
All right.
Um, Ken is actually going to share on this one, so he should be pulling it up for you now, so he can walk through it while he uh has control.
Okay, can everybody see it? Yeah, okay, good.
Yep.
So first I'll start out with telling you that um Dr. Brill and I meet with uh Mr. Dunn and Mrs. Marion uh every Monday. And we found out a couple of weeks ago that uh apparently the capital projects, and this has been shared with the Finance Committee and the um Facilities Committee, uh, the capital projects that were approved last year actually still have to go to referendum since they were all going to be bonded, they would actually have to go to referendum. So it sounds like uh they will not be holding a separate referendum for the capital projects this year. So the Facilities Committee, that's one reason we had to have the uh, that, the special meeting was to move the, the projects that were approved in, into year one and reprioritize a few other projects. And those projects were the first line in the high school, which is plumbing fixtures and equipment. So that these were all approved by the board last year. The third line in the high school, which is the additional design funds for the uh boys locker room renovation. And the fifth line on the high school, which was the replace exterior doors at high school, as well as the second line in the middle school, which has replaced the original electric service. So in addition to those projects and the, with a little bit, little background, the Facilities Committee has been discussing the capital plan since I think either our June or July meeting and every, every meeting since then. So in, in addition, on the high school, we've prioritized additional paving. As you know, last year we paved the, the front driveway. And this would continue it into the, to the front parking lot uh around the main entrance area. The li, library air conditioning has emerged as a need this year as well as the uh replacing the roof and rooftop AC unit. And that would be over the guidance area at the high school. And then in Wiskeneer, we've got replacing the building management system. And I've got Mr. Caldwell here too, to help give any details on the, on any of these projects, if anybody has questions. Uh, we have a hundred thousand dollars for paving and concrete. And that would be to continue the paving work that was done there a couple of summers ago to um finish the, the bus uh driveway across the front of the building. That would, they put, uh, when they did the project, they had some uh, some space left over and they uh, they put some process down for us, but we need to have it paved. And then replacing the uh seminar room seating has emerged as a need also this year. And those are the projects that the, the committee voted on. If you have any questions about them or how they were prioritized, we can answer them for you.
So, so let me just make sure I understand the question, the, the comment about the stuff that wasn't approved. It was approved in this year's budget, but it never went to referendum. So that means we have to re-approve it in next year's budget?
Correct, that's what we were told.
And is it just items that they were going to finance or was it all items?
It was just items that were going to be financed to buy bonding. And they were, every item on the capital plan was identified as being either cash or bonding. And ours, all of ours that were approved were identified as being bonded.
Okay. So when we, just a thought, when we submit it, we ought to take the things that are um just a carryover, repeat, they've already approved them once and we're just resubmitting them and we ought to highlight them somehow, right? Put them in a different color, highlight the cell, whatever you think is right, but.
Makes sense.
I think it just, we need to, and somehow footnote it so that they understand this was already approved in this, in the, the current year budget, but is, has to be re-approved because of the, of the referendum. But it's, has to be re-approved because of the, of the referendum.
That's a good suggestion, Bob.
And are they gonna get ahead of the referendum stuff for next year?
Excuse me?
Well, I mean, I don't wanna have a repeat of this for next year, right? And this has been, always been a problem, right? Because you have to do capital projects on a different timeline than your budget cycle, so. So that means they have to, they, they have to notice it very differently than they do uh, the bu- the referendum. They have two weeks to do a referendum, they have forty-five days to do it on the, on the ca- on the, on capital projects, so. And you know what, if this COVID stuff continues, they are not gonna be running separate referendums on anything, right? I mean, that's gonna, nobody will come out to vote. Um, so it's uh, unlike years where we do referendum after referendum after referendum. I think we're gonna see one referendum a year for this stuff, so, if at all. So I just uh, I just hope they're scheduling them now, we ought to be pushing on that.
Yeah, I mean, we're, just a, a quick piece to that, Bob. Um, we know Mr. Dunn, you know, in our Monday meetings, he's talked about that and he's talked about the schedule and, and he's aware of that. I, I, I think, to your point, I think he and perhaps folks on the Board of Finance are thinking one referendum for the capital and that it might tie that in with the town referendum in May. Um, I don't know that they'd be doing another one anytime soon, so that's, that's part of the conundrum here. With the executive order from the governor and not having to have an actual referendum and having um, our elected officials actually approve the budget last spring. That, that, because bond, the bond council doesn't accept that, they want an actual town referendum.
The, the second question I had is I thought we were putting money in the budget for the locker room um, last year, and it was a big issue and a big discussion, and now it's pushed out to year two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Is there a reason we're pushing it downhill, downstream like that?
Yes, uh, last year, uh, the Board of Finance approved one hundred thousand dollars for design money, additional design money for that project. And we got an updated proposal from Tecton, I think uh, Joy uh, mentioned that in her report, that, that we approved. So we still have money left over from the first design money allocation that was approved a couple of years ago. And this is, this thirty-five thousand in year one is the additional design money we need for them to complete the, the design all the way up to being able to actually go out to bid on the product and get, uh, project and get the firmer number for us to put in the following year.
And when would we take it out to bid, do you think?
I, I, I would have to find out from Tecton how long it will take them to complete the process. I don't know the answer to that.
We probably ought to have a really good view of the timeline on that and ask ourselves, should we be going and asking for the capital approval now? Right, without, without the, you know, cuz you know, it's always a year later, you know, to start building things. And that locker room has to have a sense of urgency. Right, maybe we ought to be asking for the capital approval now, and then you have three years in which to spend it. It's uh, so it's just, I'm a little nervous that project keeps getting uh, kick the can down the street, so. And uh, to me, that thing's a travesty.
Right, I'll get the answer to that question, Bob.
Yeah. I'd rather go in aggressive on that topic and let them gnaw on it again, right? They've already started gnawing on it and this, this strategy would say, oh, just forget about it for another year. We'll talk to you in spring of, spring of uh, twenty twenty-two, right? Before we even ask you for the capital. Uh, I think it's, we'd go out of sight, out of mind with them. Then we gotta know.
I can report back at the next board meeting.
Well, in, in, so timeline in terms of submission to Mr. Dunn, so, and this would be kind of for Ken and Joy, just to, to talk about this. If the board's in agreement on what Bob is suggesting, is that something that we wanna move now? Um, and you know, uh, amend what has been forwarded here? And this is a, a recommendation from the facility committee. And uh, so we can approve it tonight, so we can move it along. I think, I know there's some urgency to the timeline in terms of Mr. Dunn's process, so. Either Ken or Joy, do you have any thoughts on that? And I don't, I don't wanna overstep the facilities committees, who've done all the work.
I'm on the facility committee, I'm sorry, I just, I'm just working.
But Bob, I, I, I agree with you, I think we, you know, we do need to have a sense of urgency because, like you said, it's, it's, the project is a travesty. I mean, it's a priority of ours for sure. Um, I feel like we're in a difficult position given, you know, our, the circumstance with COVID and everything like that. Um, I guess for, we were kinda torn with. You know, do we go in and ask for the capital, like you said? Um, or we, I guess we're more trying to be mindful of the current situation that we're facing right now.
Perhaps that's the discussion that Dr. Brill and I can have with Mr. Dunn and Mrs. Marion on Monday, when we meet with them next.
That sounds like a good idea, but I like your idea, Bob, about the timeline.
Yes.
Getting a specific timeline.
Okay, if you wanted to go fast and you went, or you push the timeline as fast as you can, when would you wanna have the capital approval? And maybe, maybe at, at a million three, it might be a separate capital approval that has to be done, right? Cuz it's big and they might wanna wait until they have it, but I wouldn't wanna let our calendar year um, cycle here get in the way of acting fast, that's my only worry here. Right, so if you said, oh, I, I, I haven't finished the design, so I need the thirty-five thousand. But I've, that, that'll get done, you know, soon enough that I don't wanna wait for a whole year before I go to the, go forward for capital. I'd put it in, in the current year as a separate line, so you know, project. And then have the discussion with Dunn that says it, you, you might not wanna give the final approval until the design's done, but it's still in the year. So um, I just, we have, get in the habit of doing year blocks, right? I, I need to, I need to find money now and a year from now I'll go ask for the capital, but uh, the, the actual project money. I'm sorry, I just, I'm pushing, I'm pushing it cuz I think we need urgency here, that's all.
Yeah, the, the only difficulty with moving the, I think, if I hear you right, you're, you're suggesting moving the million three into year one. And i- is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, the only issue with that is that the intention of continuing the design work was to be able to get a real actual hard number to put in the plan. So it may not end up being that number. And I don't know, I don't know with the process, if that's something that we can just put the placeholder of the million three and, and amend it? If we can get the design work and the bid done quickly?
Okay. Let's do this, if we approve it, I think I would suggest we approve it and authorize the superintendent to move it into the current year after his discussion with Mr. Dunn, right? If, if that's what the, between the first selectmen and the superintendent, they agree. So we can make it a, an approval with a contingency, right? To move that forward if the, our two leaders would agree that's the right way to play it. Because you know, Dunn needs to do something with the Board of Finance, right? And get them focused on how much capital they got coming in the next year. And so that's why he's doing it now, is to get ahead of the game. And so I think he might want it in the current year. And then I would suggest, Ken, you'd put some contingency on it, right? And leave yourself some maneuver, you know?
I think that's a good, I think that's a good idea, I'd like to support that.
It's pretty precise, one, three, two, two, eight, two, four. For something we don't have the final scoping on.
We had a number, Bob, but the, if I recall, the Board of Finance thought that it was too high.
Too high.
They wanted someone else to take another look at it.
Okay, um. And so is that what this design work is? Or is there another piece of work going on to decide, decide if it's right or right?
The, the design work is to, for Tecton to continue and bring it up to where we can go out to bid for the project and get hard numbers.
So how are we answering the Board of Finance's question?
Well, by submitting this, the proposal of the exact break, they wanted to see the breakdown of, you know, cost of everything for the project.
Well, it's a budgeting question, more, to me, it's more, this is more about budgeting and what year, yeah. I, I think in the end, we don't want them to approve a project until we have the final estimate, you know, based on a real healthy design, right? We want them to approve the project based on that. But then the question is, what year do you put the budget in, right? And uh, cuz we'd love to go fast if we can get them to approve that. We would love to get, take it out to bid, go get all that done. And so I think you almost have to split your head into approving the project versus approving, you know, putting a budget, you know, placeholder in. And uh, so that's, that would be a discussion with Mr. Dunn about how's the best way to play it. And it ought to be rooted in what should your timeline be, right?
And, 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 can we, Kelly, in the game, can we change our estimate if we need to?
Yeah, and talk about that, and that's a healthy discussion. Because in the end, you know, on a million three deal, a project, it's big enough. It's probably one of the bigger projects the town's embarked on, right? All things considered, right? A short of our big school project and the, the, at, at police station renovation and a, and a library. It's one of the biggest projects the town's gonna take on. And so, and I can see it through all of our stuff, there's, there's not very few things that are that big, so. Um, so I think it may deserve a separate approval eventually anyhow, but it doesn't say, don't budget it, right? Budget something, but we can act when we need to, right? And that would be how I'd, I'd look the Board of Finance in the eye and say, okay, don't slow things down because you just chose not to budget something, so. And they'll remind us, oh, we, we, you told us to budget six hundred K and that's what we budgeted and it didn't turn out to be there. And uh, oh, we'll probably get a lot of a heat on the discussion, but I think this is a budgeting, budgeting structure discussion more than it is an approval project discussion.
Right.
Okay, so do we want to go ahead and make that contingent motion?
Well, let's, let's see if there's any other questions before we go make motions, so. I, I, I'm sorry, I kinda dominated with my questions there, but it's, uh, thank you for that.
What's everybody else's comfortability, questions, comments? And not just on the boys locker room, but really anything on the capital plan. None? I'm glad.
Joy, I'm just, I'm just trying to think back, um, I'm thinking about the Board of Finance and that one point three million. Um, wasn't also part of the issue with putting it in year two? Just the timing that's been lost at this point, like if we, if we don't get approval on, you, you know, if we don't arrive at an estimate that works for them and can't start the design process um, soon, then we, and we have to do the construction over a summer. We would have to wait till the summer of twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two.
You're saying you had to wait anyway.
So I think, wasn't that the other part of the reason why it got pushed into year two?
Yes, that didn't come out of the Board of Finance, that came from our.
Well, no, I mean, just because we've been delayed at this point.
Right. But I think Bob's point is important that, you know, this is really like a budget structure, which I didn't really look at it that way. Um, let's try to budget it so we can act on it, even though we ideally can't get to it anytime soon.
Well, let's, let's use that as a real example. So if you put it in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget, you will get approval on that in May of twenty twenty-two. If you had, i- if, if you're thinking I have to go out to bid ahead of that and I need the budgetary approvals in order to go do the bidding, that, you have to back up from that date and say, I've got approval from the Board of Finance and the town for a million dollar thing before I'm going out to bid. That's a twenty-two, that's in the budget year of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. That's not in the, if you waited all the way till the summer of, you know, June, May of twenty twenty-two, you're gonna be building in twenty twenty-three. I mean, you're, you're gonna lose all year there, that's what I'm worried about. Um, I'm thinking they're gonna have to approve it in the upcoming uh, in this calendar year in order to be able to get us to twenty twenty-two. That's my worry. And it's a timeline, it's almost, remember we had in the school that if you wanna build it here, then you go out to bid here and then therefore you need the budget approval by here and here's when you have to have the design done, there's a whole timeline? We have to be able to show that to people that says, here's where you need the budgetary approval, yea or nay, at a referendum. And, and because of that, you better put, park it in your budget in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. That's, that's what I'm thinking. And that's why the timeline's important, cuz I think you need the approval before you can go out to bid, and there's a timeline to that. Sorry, am I confusing?
Well, let's, let, Dr. Brill and I have that conversation with Mr. Dunn and Mrs. Marion and see, see how we can make it work.
Yeah, and, and quite frankly, I think we should see what that timeline looks like, you know? It, I know, it does like we did with the school, it says, we want this, this period to go start the building. What are the steps that have to get us there? And Tecton's really good at laying that stuff out.
They are.
Um, so I think that would help a lot.
Okay.
Yeah, Tecton's been great, they're very responsive and.
So do you want me to make a, a motion, Rosa?
Yeah, yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that?
I think I have it in my mind, I. Um. Uh, I would uh, move that the uh, um, that the Board approve the ten-year capital improvement plan as recommended by the Facilities Committee um, uh, for delivery to the, uh, for the town for their purposes. Um, and authorize the superintendent to work with the first selectmen to advance forward the one point three, two, two, eight, uh, wait, twenty-four, that's in year two of the plan into year one. If it's agreed with the first selectmen and the superintendent, that that is warranted.
Second. Okay, Amy, any further discussion on that?
I just wanna be clear that if it is not agreeable and it's not the way Mr. Dunn wants to go, then.
And we, and we're approving it as is.
Gotcha, just wanna make sure we're all clear on that, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Okay, uh, on to old business. And uh, we just have the, we did the um, Tecton presentation early, so we just have an update on the new school project. Um. Not too much of an update here, the project was recently approved by the zoning commission. So the only pressing issue right now is the question of the Candlewood Lake Road water line. Um, in the actual design of the new school itself, Tecton had priced out both the water line as well as onsite wells for water. Um, but they prefer the water line, it's more permanent in nature. Um, and this is, this is what's preferred by Tecton. If we, if the project were to switch to wells instead of a water line, um, the design team would have to go back and redesign some things. And that's likely going to add cost to the project. Um, the, at the NBC meeting, the general um, feeling was that wells will likely end up costing more for lesser quality product. Um, but right now, the Board of Finance is the entity that's deliberating the financial impact of both of those options. And a public hearing for that will begin on Wednesday, um, the twenty-eighth at seven PM. So that's the current status of the new school.
Rosa, what's happening with the uh, wetlands issue since the last meeting? When, when would we see some revised plans that deal with, with those concerns?
Um, I don't actually know, I don't know if, I know that um, Malone and McBroom had talked at previous meetings about having some uh, rough ideas for where wetlands would go, not onsite but offsite. Um, so I assume that they're gonna go back to, to those plans. I don't know when those will be released.
Yeah, and I don't know if they'll be released, necessarily, you know, formally, uh, I'm sure they'll be reviewed at one of the, the, the meetings that uh, Tecton has with NBC. Um, but we do have the November seventeenth Design Development, uh, Design Approval Meeting, which is a joint meeting uh, that we'll have between Board and, uh, Ed and NBC. So we'll certainly know at that point, um, I imagine they would have the exact spots drawn up and they could show us exactly that. That's what I know at this point.
I would, gotta be asking that they get that on that agenda and not just let it skate by. I mean, that's, that, we have this contingent. I mean, that's that we have this contingent approval. I'd love to have it so we can say, okay, here's how we are clearing that contingency.
Right.
And I think as a board, we should be insisting on that.
Definitely noted.
I will contact Tecton right now while we're finishing the meeting.
So does anybody have any other questions on new school project? If not, we can move on to three main points.
But wait a second, Rosa, we did have one thing on the new school project. It's it's a newer, newly established committee. That Mike and Debbie are, Mike is chairing, that has to do with the new school. Mike is going to give a little update.
Yeah, definitely.
Sure, so new school committee. So far, we have our members, I have made a nice little list here and I can't find it. And the committees can consist of PTO President Jennifer Peralta-Marcato. PTO President Brenda, I think, I think that you pronounced that Coupler.
Kyper, thanks.
Kyper, there you go. Eve. Who was a board member, two civilians. Eve, a board, former board event member, Colette Strom, former board event member. Mary Rose Diamond, who is a center school, as we all know, Mary Rose, and Melissa, we all know Melissa. Debbie, myself, two teacher representatives, Katie Zaza and Kimberly. Rakola.
Rakula.
Rachel.
Rakula, there you go.
Rachel.
And so far, I'm aiming to get a meeting going for. Of a couple of weeks, because it seems like teacher, parent-to-year conferences. Of the election day is kind of is is a big thing that's kind of coming up to work, so hopefully get a couple of meetings before. Before Thanksgiving and then first meeting back from Thanksgiving, we'll have, hopefully we'll have a couple of meetings for you.
And Mike, this is this is for the naming committee, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, the school, can you can you talk about some of the conversations you and Deb have had and to talk about including students and so forth and that that I know you have to talk.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's pretty much it. We want to include the students.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How you're going to do that?
I really want to discuss that with the principals and the teachers and. Yeah, just make them really the guy in the conversation. Yeah, I don't know what we're going to get into actual presentations from kids or do it by teachers. And I don't know if we're going to have a presentation at a meeting. It seems like that's going to be hard to do, but if we can, you know, if we're going to do that, we'll we'll try and pull that off. Around Thanksgiving or before Thanksgiving, rather. Yeah, I don't know. That's that's about it. We're kind of, we're still in the baby stages.
Okay. A lot of, a lot of times, students have been involved in, like, sort of, not a naming contest, but they. Pick names sort of that are their favorites, so that would be interesting information to get from the kids.
Yeah, I think I'd like to have them start making the list rather than have like. Us get together and come up with three names or five names and have them pick. I think I'd rather have them maybe, you know, guided by teachers. Give them some examples, but then, you know, move from there.
Yeah.
You'll get some really interesting names.
Yeah, make sure you give them some guidelines.
The 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 committee is is aware of the policy, so it has to be a geographic location. Or geographic significance close to the school. So at least we have that there. I did get an interesting question about naming things around the school. Such as like the Butterfly Sanctuary or certain, I don't know, foyers or. Aspects of the school. I was like, that's, let's let's name the school first and then we'll get there.
Right.
That that was kind of an interesting thing. I don't I don't know if you want to keep the committee around for naming stuff like that, but.
I think we can leave that probably up to the.
For later.
Future principal, principals.
Yes, I agree. I agree. Yeah, that was, that was just an interesting comment I had from somebody. Thought you were in it.
I just wanted to share.
Our board policy just talks about building naming, to be frank, so I think it.
Right.
Always be outside the remit of the board, to tell you the truth.
Uh, the last line of the policy does dictate parts of the building to Board of Ed discretion, actually.
Okay, oh, cool.
Um, I just wanted to share another interesting little tidbit. Katie Zaza, who's a center school teacher who will be serving on the committee. Wrote back to Mike when he asked her to to be part of the process and. She said that she's very proud to be a representative on the committee because she attended Center and Huckleberry as a child. When she grew up here in Brookfield and she feels that it's such an honor that she'll be teaching in the new school that she helped to name. So I thought that was a really nice little anecdote.
That's great.
Absolutely, that's good share.
This is as I said, Charlie is a dream teacher. She's just, love it. She's the best.
All right, good stuff. Anything else on new school? Okay, so now we are on to three main points.
Okay, I was thinking covid update would be number one. The Tecton well presentation.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And then for the third thing, I thought maybe the review of the budget priorities.
Did we have the well presentation last for the last meeting as one of the three main?
Yeah, we did, actually, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we want to have that again, or I don't know.
Probably not, but.
Maybe, I don't know, since we have the calendar. Yeah, yeah, maybe it doesn't need to be a three main points, but maybe we can, the new school project. Facebook page and website can be sort of. Updated with some information on that, so maybe, you know, the community can go there and maybe they can, you know. Write an email if, you know, they think it's a great idea or they think it's a, you know, it's a little bit too much. Maybe getting some of that feedback from the community would be helpful, so we don't have to do it in three main points. We can just sort of. Update the pages with that.
Do you want to then do the new, the school year calendar approval?
Sending it out regardless, but I mean, it doesn't hurt to get it out there as part of the three points.
I would say that or the capital, approving the capital plan and our discussion about the locker room and stuff, maybe if we wanted to put that in. That might be important.
I think the locker room has to be, I think locker room has to be on there.
Yeah, I think that's important.
The ten-year capital plan.
And there were some depth to the discussion and questions too, which were good, was good.
And traffic and trap, you know, traffic on that topic.
Okay. Um, John, when I'm talking about the the review of the budget priorities, I was wondering, I meant to ask you this before. I think we have, don't we have a budget round table in November?
Uh, November fourth, right before our board meeting, yeah.
Okay, so should, maybe I should put that in there too?
I would, yeah, I think so. And what we'll do is we can, we can link the budget assumptions and priorities as a link, so it doesn't have to be, you know. Attached, you know, all of them people to click right to it.
Okay.
We keep the, you know, your narrative can be brief, it doesn't have to be lengthy.
Yep.
That's great, Debbie, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so you're good with those, Debbie?
Yep.
All right. Uh, we do not have, oh, upcoming events, sorry. Go ahead, Amy.
Oh, yeah, okay, all schools will be closed on Tuesday, November third. At Center this Friday, October twenty-third is a virtual spirit day, and there's a virtual community meeting at two fifteen. Monday, October twenty-six, Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, and then Wednesday, the twenty-eighth are fall conferences. That'll be early release. Wednesday, October twenty-eighth is where your costume for virtual learning, if you choose, and decorate your center school pumpkin that the children all receive this week. And more information to come from that for Mrs. Diamond and classroom teachers. At Huckleberry, we also have conferences, the twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, next Monday through Wednesday with an early release. And they're also celebrating Halloween virtually by wearing your costume, if you choose. And the Readathon fundraiser is beginning Monday, October twenty-sixth and running through Sunday, November eighth. And for Whiskinier and the high school, I just have parent-teacher conferences, which are upcoming in both schools for November eleventh and November twelfth. That's it.
Hey, thank you. All right, we do not have an executive session tonight, so unless there's anything else, without objection, the meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.